Thank you for coming to the school committee. We're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I got thrown off there for a second only because we're starting just to go into executive session. So our regular session really starts at 7 o'clock. At 6:30, we have an executive session first. And if I could have a motion to please go into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining.
I move the school committee going to executive session for the purpose of discussion strategic with, oh my god, strategies with respect to collective bargaining or litigation pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And Ms. Hunt seconded it. Now roll call. Ms. Trusselli?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
We're going into executive session. We'll come out at 7 o'clock to start our regular meeting. Thank you for coming to the school committee meeting tonight. We just did our executive session, but, and we started with the pledge, but we'll do it again for our regular meeting at 7 o'clock. And join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairs gotta go.
They gotta go. All right. I'm logging on, but it's gradual.
Oh.
But I'll be there in a few minutes.
Yeah.
I printed it.
Oh.
Thank you, though.
Yep.
All right, so we started, we started early, and we are now ready to get started with the regular meeting. And first thing on the agenda is comments from community members. Who would like to address the school committee tonight?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So we're here to adjust public--
Just give your name and everything for the audience at home and--
Yeah. I'm Tom Pinto.
Brian Fitzgerald.
I'm Stacia Levitt.
So, yeah, we'd like to come talk to the school committee tonight, just in public hearing. Obviously, I'm tonight wearing a few hats. I'm a--
It's not a public hearing. This--
Oh, no, I know.
This is a comment.
Comment, public comment. I come here with a few hats, wearing one as the union president, former school teacher, town meeting member, taxpayer. So, you know, we're coming here with a wide variety of different hats to talk about tonight. I know Brian's also a public school teacher and a taxpayer and a parent of, you know, Plymouth Public Schools students. Same with Stacia.
I teach in Kingston. I live in Plymouth. I'm also part of the Plymouth North Booster Club Executive Board. So we're here tonight to talk to you about question two, the ballot question number two. There's many reasons we'd like you to support the other 110, 210 school committees that have opposed question two. The first one being that, you know, local control. When we, if we put in these 12 school committees, like these 12 charter schools for the forever, this is a forever ballot question, these, they aren't required to have local control like many of the charter schools do in the state. And so that's, that's a, that's huge for us. I know in Plymouth, we have Rising Tide, that we don't technically have someone from the town, an elected official from the town, sitting on their board. And that's an important piece to, I think, any school system that's receiving public funds have.
I can, I can talk about two. This ballot question two, it's not about, we're not here saying no school choice. You know, I believe as an educator, there should be choice. I believe that we're just here every saying that, why are we lifting the cap on the amount of charter schools that can be put into the state? Where currently, the state hasn't reached the cap. And that's kind of, is our piece on it. It's, you know, I want to say, like I said, maybe the cap's around 120, but, I mean, we're still only, only like 78 charter schools. So there is, and those aren't direct numbers, but there is plenty of room for charter schools to be, continued to be added into the state. So I mean, I think that's my, one of our main concerns is, why lift the cap if we haven't reached the cap? Brian, do you want to add anything?
I would just add also, somebody moved here just a couple of years ago. You know, I am completely at ease paying my property taxes toward the Plymouth Public Schools. And my family chose to live here because of the Plymouth Public Schools. My child's not a student yet because she's five months old, but we, we want her to be a public, public school child here in Plymouth. And I'm completely at ease paying taxes to support that because I know that my town meeting representative has a voice in how they're spent. I know the people choosing how to spend those tax dollars live here in Plymouth. They're my neighbors. I know that those dollars are spent following laws and regulations that ensure that every child gets an education. If a child walks through the doors of Plymouth Public Schools, he or she will receive an education. They do not need to conform or fit into a box. They will be treated with the validity and the value that they have. And I know that my daughter will be the same way. And that's why I'm proud to support Plymouth Public Schools. And that's why I'm asking you as the public school committee here in town to join those 210 other school committees in endorsing a no vote on question two.
And I have to follow up with what Brian said. I have two daughters who have gone through Plymouth Public Schools. I have a junior at Plymouth North, and I have a daughter who's graduated from Plymouth North. She's a National Honor Society student. She's in the nursing program at UMass Boston in Plymouth Public School. And I teach in Kingston, and I have to say, I am amazed at what Plymouth does for all their children, whether you're an athlete, whether you're musically talented, whether you're a vocational student. Plymouth Public Schools is a great place to come and be a student, and I want that for all children. And even if they're in a charter school, I believe it should be a Horace Mann charter school, and I believe it should be a charter school with local control. So please consider voting to support no on question two.
I mean, any questions from you guys or anything? But like I said, that's, that's where we stand. We wanted to make sure that, you know, we publicly told you guys and addressed you that that's how we feel about posing question two.
Thank you for hearing us this evening also.
Yes. Ms. Hunt?
I have a discussion item for this, but I, I would make a motion that we take a vote to whether or not our school board wants to decide to support this or not, although I would like to say I wish you guys were here a few weeks ago.
Yeah. When it would've mattered.
Yeah.
Yeah, it still matters, I feel.
I don't think it matters because the election's tomorrow. And it won't even be in the paper.
But I do--
Right. And it won't be in the paper till Wednesday.
To the discussion.
And it'll probably be on page 30.
So I may, I'm, I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the wording of the motion.
I would like to make a motion that as a school committee, we take a vote whether or not we're gonna join the other 210 school committees.
You're making a motion to support--
To take a vote whether or not we as a board want to support or don't support question two.
No, that, no, right. So let me help you get. You're just making a motion to support question two?
No. No, I'm making a motion for us to, I, I know what I'm gonna do, but as a board, we need to vote whether or not we're going to support the no on two campaign. Is that it?
No.
Yeah?
No on two campaign. Yeah, she said it at the end.
Yeah.
The end part.
Right?
No, I, I don't know. I would think it would be worded simpler than just whether or not you're, the board is in support or not supportive of question two.
What all the other school committees around the state have been doing is, as a committee, voting whether or not Plymouth Public School Committee or whatever school committee is going to either vote to support or oppose question two.
So you, so your motion--
So you're gonna have two motions then? Because once we, once you win, have, let's say that your motion passes, then we're gonna have to have another motion to actually-- yea or nay it. One is just a motion to actually vote, right? Jim, am I, I mean, Dr. Sorensen?
That could make us a lot simpler.
Yeah, I think it's a lot simpler than that.
Yeah, I'm thinking you can too, but--
Go ahead.
So I think the motion that you want is, so you want Plymouth Public Schools to, so your motion is--
I want us to take a vote whether or not to support it or not.
Well, I don't, you're asking two questions in one. So what you want to do is that the Plymouth Public Schools support the no on two?
Yes.
Or a vote, a no vote on two?
Yes.
Yes, and then the vote will decide whether we do or no.
Right, right. If we don't all support it, then we don't all support it.
So it's a yes, so if you vote, so if you are a, you're gonna vote no on two, you're a yes. If you're not gonna vote, if you're gonna vote yes on two, then you're a no.
Right.
Gotcha. Am I, are we all on the same page?
Yes.
Okay.
We still need a motion.
Yes, so now we need a motion to do what Michelle just said.
I'm not saying that again.
Michelle?
Can I just?
Ms. Badger, I'm sorry.
Do I have to do the whole motion all over again, or can we just go with what I just said?
I think it would be a good idea--
Okay, so I move that the Plymouth School Committee take a vote to support the no, no vote on two. Or question two is probably--
Question two. Ballot question.
Ballot question number two.
The term, the vote plot. Your motion is to take the decision to oppose question two.
Thank you.
Okay, I like that. Thank you.
That's what I was saying.
So I'll second it. If she's gonna make the motion, then I'll second it.
Now, any discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll see Mr. Morgan first.
I don't support voting, taking a vote on this. I think it's, wasn't on our agenda. It's kind of last minute. The election's tomorrow, so it's not gonna affect anything. So whether I support or don't support question two, I don't think we should be taking a vote spur of the moment this evening. So I'm gonna vote against taking a vote. If that makes sense.
We're not voting on that, though, so we got, we got past that. We're not voting on whether or not we're going to vote. We're actually voting on it.
Yeah.
So, you support it.
I don't believe we should be taking a vote, period.
Yeah. Well, any member can make a motion at any time, so, and that's what just happened, so. That's Robert's rules. So she made a motion, it was seconded. And Nancy has a--
I want to just make sure that if the motion was made by--
Michelle, I'm seconded by me.
Yes, that's correct.
Clarification and aid from--
It's because I couldn't get my words out right.
Further discussion. Ms. Hunt?
So I, I wanted to, so I have another hat, too, and I, I just wanted to mention, because I am sure, I know that, you know, it's out there, and the commercials say that the Mass PTA supports no on two. I'm actually the one that wrote the position statement for Mass PTA. And I just wanted to read a clause that is written into the statement, just for discussion, so that everybody knows part of what's going on with that is, just that a no vote does not mean you're anti-charter school. It just means that, right now, we've got plenty of openings, we have plenty of seats, and until the system is fixed, then we're not, Mass PTA is not willing to support raising the cap. And one of the reasons being is we have PTAs in charter schools all over the state. So one of the clauses that I wanted to read in the position statement that I wrote is, until public charter schools are open to all students and free of both tuition charges and fees that exceed state or federal laws, are supported by specifically allocated public funds in amounts that do not exceed and do not divert funding from non-charter public schools, are legally organized as 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations, adhere to all federal and state laws and protect the health and safety of all children, comply with federal and state laws governing public schools that require fiscal transparency, responsibility, and accountability, provide all education stakeholders, including parents, with absolute transparency concerning both non-public funding sources and any external organizations with, which the charter school enters into fee-for-service contracts, ensure the professional staff is certified for the positions they hold, work collaboratively with parents to ensure meaningful and family engagement in student learning and school success, and adhere to the mechanisms for periodic independent data collection and evaluation to determine alignment with provisions of the stated charter and ability to meet or exceed expectations required of non-charter public schools. Then, when that happens, then, then possibly the Massachusetts PTA will support that. So I just want to read those parts because I think that a lot of people don't realize when they say that, you know, we're against this, this is why.
Dr. Sorensen?
I, I concur with Mr. Morgan's concern that we're taking a vote on a non-agenda item. However, I am gonna vote with the motion for two reasons. One, because we have full attendance here. The whole committee is here tonight. And two, every once in a while, it happens that something comes up, that we have to take a vote on something, especially if we were remiss. And as a committee, we were relatively remiss in not taking an action on this probably three or four months ago. Having said that, I think the motion is appropriate and should be voted on.
Any other before I make my comments?
I was just concerned on it because we've applied for, and been approved for charter schools, so that's the uncomfortable part.
Yep.
But this, this motion is about additional charter schools.
Right.
Yeah.
Not the charter we've applied for.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so for the reason why this committee hasn't acted on this, taken a stand on this, and I believe you're well aware of it, is if you follow along in an old colony, you saw a full-page article on how we're trying to come up with a solution for our alternative high school. And we're trying to work to develop within the charter constraints process, a solution for alternative high school for the kids that are most at risk in our district. Finding funding some other way right now in today's reality is not likely. So we either tell the kids to wait a few more years, or we try to find a solution now, and that's the solution as a committee we're looking to pursue. So that's the reason why we didn't want to confuse the public by taking two different opposing positions. Let me finish, please. So first, we realize that what we're trying to do is under the existing cap. It has nothing to do with the vote. The problem we had was we didn't want to inadvertently confuse the public over, are they for the charters, are they against the charters, what's going on here? Looks like they're taking two opposing votes. Because while we are all very in tuned with the nuances of these discussions, the general public usually is not, and I didn't want something to get lost on them. Having said all that, tonight, we have the question before us. I personally will vote to not support it until all funding and governance is worked out for the charter school processes. Any additional growth of it, I believe, is unrealistic. I think funding and governance has to be worked out first before we grow it anymore across the state. Once that's worked out, then I'm open to it, so, but we, we have that discussion, when and if we ever get to the day where it's funded properly and it's governed properly. So having said all that, does anybody else have anything they want to add or--
You took out what I was gonna say.
--to the discussion? Then I would call for a vote, and since we're not in the system, I'm gonna do a manual vote.
It's not--
It's not a motion that was pre-typed.
Okay. This is a motion that was made after the genuine was put together.
That being said, I would ask all those in favor--
So we're, we're voting in favor--
Of no.
Of no on question two.
We're voting in favor of the motion which is to oppose.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
To a vote, right, to vote no on two.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Can I just say, just as a, as a, and I'm being a curmudgeon a little bit now, and I apologize, but it would be more productive if you had come sooner, right, so that people have more time to digest it. We could've gotten it on the agenda, we could've had opposing views, and we could've done it a little bit better than the way we just did it, but--
With respect, I would just say I emailed every member of the committee two weeks ago, and I never received a response from any of you on this issue.
Never got.
Might want to check your spam folder, then. I use the emails used on the website.
Well, then it went into spam or something because I never got it, and I get my emails.
And I don't mean to seem ungrateful, we appreciate the support, folks.
I just wanted to say thank you. And I think we, we were aware of your dilemma with the charter school, and that's why we waited till now until it was worked out. But I think you're doing everything right with that charter school. It's coming in under the current system. It, it has local control, it's well thought out, and just like everything Plymouth Public Schools does, it, it's done with thought and care for all their students. So thank you for taking the vote tonight, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So that was long, but does anybody else have any comments to the school committee? Okay, seeing none, then, we'll move on to our reports from our student representatives, starting with Max.
Hello. The National Honor Society induction ceremony will be held on Monday, November 21st at 7:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center. Marks closed on Friday, November 4th, and report cards will be distributed this Thursday, the 10th. All parents and guardians should expect their student to return home from school with their report cards. On Thursday, November 10th, Plymouth North History Department and Student Council will put on a Veterans Day Assembly. The school will honor members of the Plymouth community that have served in the armed forces. Presentations will be held at 9:00 AM and 10:00 AM, followed by a lunch on, for the veterans. Winter sports signups are Wednesday, November 9th at 2:15 PM. Students have been notified of where their designated areas for the different sports are. Meet the Coaches/Clearance Night will be held on November 16th at 6:30 PM in the Performing Arts Center. The annual Pardon Puff Game is at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 15th at Plymouth North High School. Bus passes were distributed to all students. If your student didn't receive a bus pass, please have them see Ms. Kendall in the main office. This morning, we welcomed our students from the French Exchange Program with a breakfast. We have 24 students from, I don't know if I'm gonna say this right, Valbonne, France, to Plymouth North High School. They are here for a week, and they will follow their host student's class schedule. And like I said, we had a good breakfast with them this morning, and they were introduced to a lot of the administration at our school. Congratulations to the volleyball teams for being awarded the ACL Volleyball Team Sportsmanship Award. Congratulations to Caitlin Hanley for being named ACL Volleyball All-Star. Congratulations to Jacob Burkhed for being awarded Plymouth North's Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award. Congratulations to both our Plymouth North High School cheerleaders and the marching band, who had great performances at their all-scholastic band association finals and regional, or, let me see what this is. I think they had leagues this week on the cheerleaders, and they're advancing to regionals.
Yeah.
And that will be Sunday, November 13th, right?
I was there for hours. Yes.
The Thanksgiving Day Football Game versus South will be on Thursday, the 17th. No, that's wrong. I believe the game is the 24th. Do you know that? Okay.
Yeah.
I think tickets go on sale the 17th. And the game will be at Plymouth North High School on the Mario J. Romano Football Field on the 24th at 10:00 AM. And Step Up for Veterans will be held on Sunday, November 13th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It is hosted by the Interact Club at Plymouth North High School to raise money for our local veterans. Families, schools, and community members are encouraged to stop by and walk the track in addition to taking part in some of the activities that will be set up. Monetary donations will be accepted and sent to help with expenses for our local veterans. Please stop by and show your support for Plymouth veterans. We hope to see you there. And that's all.
Very good. Thank you, Max. Megan?
Hello. This fall, we have three teams qualify for tournament, and we have the golf team, the field hockey team, and the girls' soccer team. And the other sports around this in the next few weeks are wrapping up. On October 18th, we had the college fair at Plymouth North, and it was very successful, and it seemed to be very helpful for students from both North and South. I know I went, and it was very helpful to get a look around. We had the SATs and the PSATs on October 19th, and the freshmen went to the Museum of Science. Our homecoming was October 22nd, and we had over 400 students attend, and it was good to see a lot of upperclassmen there as well. We had our tech advisory dinner, which had over 300 people attend, and it was very successful. The Plymouth Marching Band had their competition, as Max said, on the New England Scholastic Band Association Finals, and they scored an 87.4 and received a gold rating, and also came eighth in the competition. On Halloween, we had our annual costume contest during lunch. And Culinary also had their buffet, which all the students prepared the food for. We're starting to get ready for Spirit Week and Thanksgiving, and our student councils are working on our banners, and we also are doing lip sync videos for it. And we also have a program called the Game Change going on itself, which is the Patriots' Anti-Violation Partnership. It happened today. It will happen November 14th and the 21st. And it's endorsed by the Attorney General and the Patriots, and we have 30 students train as peer educators in anti-violence strategies. And today, we also had winter sports signups, and that's all.
Very good. Thank you. Lot going on, as always. Old business. Does anybody have any updates for old business? Anything you guys wanna? No? I think it's like, I don't have it open, but I don't think there's that much left on there right now. So we go, new business, which is where the earlier thing should've been, but new business. Seeing none, we're moving along. You know I can't hear you on that side.
I was talking about the conference.
Say it again.
The conference. She was saying about the national conference.
The national conference?
Yeah.
What about it?
Should we bring it up?
Yes, go right ahead.
Well, the, the national conference has already opened up, and if you want to get a room or anything early, we have to really decide what we're gonna do. So that's why I'm bringing it up.
Where is it?
Denver.
It's in Denver this year.
It's in Denver, and it's the last week in March.
April?
Yeah, I used to conflict with town meeting, but now it's just, it's before. But I'd like to go, I know.
So we can take a moment on that. Why don't we do that? So, yes.
We should talk about the advocacy one, too, then, because maybe that would be something that you don't go to both, you go to one or the other.
Okay.
You'd have to.
Okay. Yep, I got that mailing.
Yeah, I got that, true.
Okay. So, Michelle and--
Bob.
Bob, is yours up this year, too?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, so our policy is that if you're up for reelection, you wouldn't go to a conference. I won't be going, because it's Denver, Colorado. So we, Dr. Sorensen and Mrs. Burgess are interested?
I would be interested, but if--
You might, you go for the advocacy for us?
If the advocacy one is available, I would rather go to that one.
It's like, it'll be like a four-day--
Yeah, it all depends.
Far away, too.
Well, not so much.
You don't need to answer tonight. I just wanted to get a ballpark of who is interested, and, so, we have interest, and we'll work out the advocacy at the same time, because I would like to have you go, definitely. And the advocacy, I would be interested in maybe going also. Doris Kern-Goodwin is gonna be at the advocacy one. All right, so, thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, I just want it brought up so that registrations can get made, so that, you know, we can, we can, you cannot hire a room until you get the registration put in, that's why.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So we'll look up how much the advocacy will cost, that one will cost, and how much these will cost, and we'll decide the next meeting.
No, it's right there.
I thought it said. Maybe it was the email, sorry.
Yeah, that one didn't have the cost.
Something had a cost on it.[1758.94]
Yeah, I also think, I had a very similar conversation with Glenn Kutter that I had last time, and there might be an opportunity for help with one of those. With the advocacy one.
Be doing presentation?
I think he needs people to go, so he told me to call him and just talk to him about it.
Good, let me know.
I don't know if that'll help us out with the registration or not, if we like went as part of MASC instead of Plymouth. That's kind of what it sounded like. Last year, that's what he offered us, sort of.
Okay.
And he said, let's talk. So I can give him a call and see.
It's funny, in my industry, if you present at the conference, it's free.
Yeah.
But they don't do, they don't do that here.
I think in our industry, you pay more.
You pay more, yeah, you pay more. Oh, well. All right, so we'll work all that out. So we'll add that to our, it'll be an old business the next time. Superintendent's Report, Dr. Maestas.
Yes, I had those two items on my list tonight, so you made my list a little bit shorter. So tomorrow, just a reminder for parents out there and our teachers, we have a Professional Development Day tomorrow. It's a full day. It's the first time in probably about nine, 10 years that we've had a Professional Development Day, a full day in our district. And I like to, actually longer than that, quite longer than that. It's probably about 12 to 15 years that we've had a full day Professional Development Day. And Dr. Campbell and his office, they've done a fantastic job of trying to organize, you know, almost 700 people. Plus, almost 800 people getting to workshops across the district. So it's quite a bit of people. So it's been a wonderful experience on my end, watching Chris do it. Because I, I never had, back when I did Chris's job, we had half-days and it was much easier than the full day. So it's been exciting watching all the, all the things happen behind the scenes. So, yeah. So tomorrow, we'll be, we'll be helping directing traffic and getting people where they need to go. And hopefully, everybody's ready to go, so. And, you know, Megan and Max did bring up tonight the SEMSBA band competition at North. And all reports is that it was absolutely fantastic. Apparently, the UMass band was just over the top good. But it was a very lively campus that is probably, I would probably say, it's probably the most people that have ever been on any one of our campuses for one event like that. But it was, we had permission to use the County Commissioners Building across the way. We had, the Registry of Deeds parking lot had cars. We had big trucks, band equipment trucks that were at the courthouse. But it was a wonderful opportunity for Plymouth to actually help another community out that couldn't sponsor it. And also, I'd like to highlight Mike and Bonnie, Mike Capel and Bonnie Holmes, for their diligent and determined work. They were, I tell you, it went off. And, you know, they did a fantastic job. We also had a lot of support from our parents. The Boosters, Band Booster Group just did a fantastic job. And a lot of volunteers from everywhere. And I'd also like to thank the neighbors. I did send a letter out to all the neighbors that we typically send out when we have a busy activity on the campus. And I got a lot of positive email from people thanking us for sending the letter, but more importantly, for just doing a good thing for the community. So that was wonderful. Veterans Day, it's this Friday. I'll be reading, I think Joe and I are going to be reading a couple of schools on Thursday, so we're working on that. There you go. So we're going to try, I think over the next couple of weeks, we're going to try to get into all our kindergarten schools across the district and read. Get some other folks to help us out. But we have a lot of kindergartens across the town of Plymouth, so the goal is to go in and read the book to them. So I know Lee probably has something to add to that later. And next week, we will be welcoming two members from Plymouth, England. Catherine and Judith, they are coming from the, our sister community of Plymouth, England. And they will be visiting us in preparation for the 400th celebration of, or commemoration of Plymouth. And we're going to be working on a lot of planning events and getting ready for a lot of the educational opportunities that we'll be working on together. And Kate, who's coming, is actually, has just been hired as the full-time education liaison for Plymouth. So she's going to be working with us, looking at opportunities. We'll be visiting the plantation. We'll be visiting our schools. Just trying to really connect different opportunities in our school district with opportunities in Plymouth, UK. Dr. Campbell and Mr. Capel have worked with myself to put together a list of opportunities, going back and forth with Plymouth, UK for the last three years. And we're going to use that list to really start connecting more and more opportunities. We've done a lot with Visual and Performing Arts. We've done Penn Pal exchanges, anthologies, but we're going to continue to look at how we branch out and get into the sciences and all different aspects of education in Plymouth. And hopefully, we will get into some sports activities too. So there's some motivation to do something with that. Talked about the two NSBA opportunities. And the last item that I have tonight is budget preparation. We started our budget meetings today. And meetings have gone well today. But one of the questions that Mr. Costin had for the committee is, would you like your budget books electronically? Or would you want them in paper format? So electronically would be a little bit easier, but it's up to you, whatever you want. Mr. Costin's office can make that happen, so.
The one question I would have about it is, if it's electronically, can we, while we're on the school board, also access that?
Yeah, you would have to, technically, you'd have to have two screens and go back and forth.
You would?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
With two windows?
So do we have a preference?
Electronics.
I like electronic.
I like electronic too. Good.
Do we still get pictures?
One hard copy at the table. That's doable. I'll tell you, I used to get all hard copies and I finally converted, so. It's, it works pretty, pretty well. I mean, it's all PDF, so. Yeah, you can tab down through it, but if, you know, if beforehand, I can, I can actually set up two different windows so you can go between. That way, it'll be a little bit easier. Okay? So electronic is?
So electronic is fine. Save a tree.
We're going to save a few.
Just a follow-up. If, if you haven't sent a letter to our neighbors, not our residences, the neighbors across the street, the courthouse and/or the Commissioners Building, thanking them for, from the school committee, thanking them for the use of their facility.
You know, Dr. Sorensen, a great suggestion, I have not done that. We will, we will get that out, okay?
Thank you.
And that's all I have for tonight.
Very good. Retirements, this is Friday.
We have just one retirement, a para educator, Nancy Pollard, from Hedge School.
Ms. Badger?
On behalf of Plymouth School Committee, I'd like to thank Ms. Pollard for her 27 years combined service to the district and wish her a wonderful retirement.
Very good, thank you. Correspondence, Ms. Hunt?
Yes, today we have two pieces of correspondence. The first one, I'm going to just pull it up because I don't have a paraphrase of it. The first one is a letter from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Dr. Campbell. Writing to express the gratitude and appreciation for supporting the work of Allison Riordan in the Science Ambassador Program. And that is from Heather Pesky, Senior Associate Commissioner. And the second one, let me pull it up, is a letter from Dr. Babini. Dear School Committee Members, Dr. Maestas, Dr. Campbell, and Mrs. Frye. And the letter is sharing a proclamation presented by the Plymouth Board of Selectmen at their meeting last evening. It would have been last week. It recognizes November 8th, 2016, as Kids Voting Day in Plymouth. The proclamation was accepted by D.J. Proctor, grade seven, student from PCIS, who thanked the board for their support and encouraged everyone to vote on Election Day. As you know, Kids Voting is a program that has taken place in Plymouth since 1996. After discussing the importance of being informed and engaged citizens in school, students go to their local precinct with their parents on Election Day and cast their ballot for president. This is the 20th anniversary of the program in Plymouth. In that time, almost 21,000 votes have been cast by Plymouth students. We would like to encourage students and parents to go to the polls once again this year and give future opportunities, future voters, an opportunity to practice being part of democracy. Sincerely, Kathy Babini.
Very good, thank you. And Dr. Maestas, you want to tee up our update now on School Improvement Plan for Hedge?
Yes. Let me just move forward here. Yes, tonight, we have Principal Kristen Wilson and members of her staff and school council are here to present the Hedge Elementary School Improvement Plan. So Principal Wilson, come on down and, I know your team is anxious to deliver a great presentation, so come on down. Do we need another chair? We can get one. Okay. You can go back there.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I'd like to introduce members of the Hedge School Council. And to my right, and to her right, I have two third-grade teachers, Ms. Amy DeGrassa and Ms. Katie Tessitore. They've been with me since my beginning at Hedge School. This is their fourth year teaching at Hedge. And over to the right, you might recognize Ms. Nicole Manfredi. She's in her third year teaching second grade at Hedge Elementary School. And in the background, providing us moral support, is our faithful grandparent, Jimmy Ma, who's been a school council member for three years as well. And often seen in school, doing lots of varied activities with the children. So tonight, for community members that might be listening and watching tonight that don't know a lot about Hedge School, I'll give a little overview of the school. I'm going to go right into some data, district data and park data. And then our, my team will be taking over and we'll be going through our four goals. And then, of course, anytime you have any questions, or if you have questions at the end, don't hesitate to reach out to us. So a little bit about Hedge School. It is a walking school. It is 106 years old, so it's one of the oldest functioning elementary schools. It's actually the oldest functioning elementary school in Plymouth at this point. This year, we have 215 students in 12 classrooms. And most of you know, we have a 13th classroom over in west of Hedge at West Elementary School. We have 14 students attending full-day kindergarten over there. We are a little bit overcrowded. Currently, as of the day I wrote this slide, 66% of our students were receiving free or reduced lunch. And based on the new state system for economically disadvantaged, 46.8% of our students are deemed economically disadvantaged. And just to give you a sense of where that falls within Plymouth, last year at this time, 21.4% of Plymouth students were economically disadvantaged. And to compare a little bit different, further, Indianbrook was at 18.8%. So we are one of the lower-income schools in Plymouth. 17% of our students are receiving special education and 6% are currently receiving accommodation plans based under the federal law of 504. And 19% of our students' English is not their first language. We have 23 students enrolled in English classes and five students that just were exited from the English Language Program this past year. And we just received nine new students from another country within the last month. So we're very excited to have them enrolled in Level 1 ELL in our school. So let's talk a little bit about our reading performance. We, our school council has set a goal that by the end of our year two, which is spring of 2017, we want 75% of the Hedge students to be reading at or grade, at or above grade level. And I know this is really tiny, but if you look under year one, in the second column, if you go all the way down to the bottom, you'll see that 76% of our students at the end of last school year were reading at or above grade level. So we went beyond our target for our first year, we're very excited. And if you look where we are now, we are at 65% reading at or above grade level. So we anticipate we're going to make our goal. We're hoping and we really feel strongly that we'll go beyond our goal this current year. And if you look back over the few years, if you look at the fall data versus the spring data, you'll see where our students come into us always at the lower side, and we're able to move them forward. And if you were to look at our park scores, you'll see that we do a lot with our student growth percentiles. We are at or exceeding where we need to be with our student growth percentiles, but our proficiency score is not where the state would like us to be. So we're, we're proud of our efforts in our student growth. And this demonstrates that in their reading. When you look at our math, math is a little bit more of a weakness for us than reading. Here, when you look, this is our spring district-made assessment. If you look at spring of 2016, 63% of our students scored a 70 or above. And our goal is 75% as well. So we have a little ways to go. But again, if you look at where we were at the end of last year, we have shown improvement in our math scores. And an exercise that our teachers did last month was they took the Plymouth Math Assessment and they took the benchmark reading assessments that we did. And we compared that to the park scores that our students did last year. And we were pleasantly surprised to see that there was a direct correlation to the students that were at or above grade level received fours and fives on park. And the students that were almost at grade level received a three. So there was a really nice correlation with our district measures, as it is with our state measures. So that was a fun exercise. Thinking about student growth percentile in reading, this isn't up there, but 52.5% of our students received a, I'm sorry. Our student growth percentile was at the 52.5% in reading and 48% in math. So our students are performing better than they did the year before. Getting into park. We are one of the lower-achieving schools across the state. And in Plymouth, we are the lowest achieving school in Plymouth. So right now, we're at the 17th percentile. So we went down this year. We strongly, looking at the data, we went down because of our fifth-grade science scores were very poor last year. And it brought us down further than we had hoped to go. We are currently held harmless due to the transfer from MCAS to Park. And now with the transfer from Park to MCAS 2O, we're going to be held harmless again. So, which is good for us. So technically, we really are Level 3, but we are at Level 2 status. And we hope to remain at Level 2 and hopefully, go to Level 1 at some point, which is our ultimate goal. So looking up here, you can compare to where our students fell with their park scores. And we, in ELA, we were at 41% and over to 47% this current year. I want you to really look though, if you look at grade 3, take a look at grade 3 and look at where grade 3 was in 2015, where we were in the 36th percentile. I'd like you to celebrate with us where they ended up in 2016, in the 60th percentile. And right beside me are my two third-grade teachers. So that really is a direct correlation to their instruction with those students. We were only 3% below the district. So that was a great success for them. If you look, our students are doing better. We do have a ways to go, and that's what our School Improvement Plan will show you tonight, how we're going to get there. We have four goals. They're directly connected to the district's goals. First one is, most importantly at this point, increase student achievement in math and reading. Our second one is create a safe and supportive school. Third, implement an effective response to invention, intervention process. And four, provide opportunities to support and communicate with families. We strongly believe that goals 2, 3, and 4 are all part of how we're going to get to Goal 1. So Goal 1 is our overarching goal, and 2, 3, and 4 are our supporting goals. So I'm just going to go over a little bit more of Goal 1, and then I'm going to let my folks beside me take over. So I shared with you the data that we have for Goal 1. Just to reiterate, 75, we want 75% of our students to be at or, at or above grade level in reading and receive a 70 or above on our math assessment. So one thing we're, we're doing, which we did last year and we're going to do again this year, is we're going to be targeting those students that are almost where we want them to be. So those students who received a 3 on Park and ELA in math, we'll be providing after-school tutoring to them, starting in January. We'll start with ELA first, and then we will do math. And we're going to be working at the skills that our teachers identified as need. And one is responding to reading through writing. And one is responding to reading and through writing, and one also is working through those multi-step word problems, which seems to be a current theme across the state. And a lot of that has to do with stamina and self-confidence and feeling that they can do the work. And so we're going to provide those opportunities to give them that support that they need. The tricky part about after-school tutoring is that we can offer it to, to children, but some children aren't able to access it. Being in, in Hedge, since we are a walking school, it does allow for folks to be able to get to and from on their own through walking, because we are targeting the older students. So we, we hope to have a good turnout this year, and thanks to our Title 1 grant, we're able to pay teachers to do that for us. We'll continue with our extended day and extended year, our enrichment activities. We just finished our first round of Hedge Academy, and we had some unique classes this year. We had typical Legos, we had some volleyball classes, and we had a local author who's actually a parent of ours, who did writing outside of the box with some students, and they, they loved it. They thought it was fabulous. They wouldn't, they were always late. The parents asked me, "Does this class end at 4:30 or 5:00?" Because she couldn't get them to stop writing. It's a great problem to have. We really refined our intervention schedule this year. We have four part-time Title 1 teachers, a reading teacher, and we were able to hire a part-time moderate special needs teacher this year that will service just kindergarten in grade 1. So this is huge for us, to be able to have our MSNs only servicing two grades versus three, which allows more collaboration and check-in time with the regular classroom teacher. So thank you for supporting that in our local budget. This year, with our intervention schedule, we were able to organize it so that our classroom teachers could provide their lessons to the students that are at risk before being pulled for small group intervention. So they're getting a solid tier-one instruction, and then they're getting that tier-two support from an interventionist, and they're going back and either getting another round of tier-two support from their classroom teacher, or they're getting a tier-three support from another interventionist, which might be at a higher level or a more complex level, for instance, Wilson Reading, which is a, a rules-based reading program. So we're very excited. That took a lot of time and flexibility amongst staff to make that happen. One of the things that we're doing in the upper grades, in grades 3, 4, and 5, is we are training our teachers to do more guided reading and strategy group instruction, which is very common in the kindergarten first and second grade. It's very natural to pull those small groups while your children are working independently. Where in the upper grade, this, the kids are typically reading independently themselves, and you might not see a upper grade teacher pulling a small group. And because of that, teachers aren't always comfortable with that. So we've worked with our literacy coach, Jen Jaeger. We've put together a day that we're going to be doing some workshops. We're actually going to be providing mini-workshop, and then we're, we're going, she's going to be teaching a guided reading lesson that our teachers will observe, and then we'll debrief on that. So we'll be working on that all year. We also are piloting Symphony Math, which is something the district has had, you've probably heard about it, for special education students, and we were able to use that tool to do a benchmarker for our students to see who is coming up at risk, borderline, or not at risk. And interesting enough, we, we have three children in our whole school that haven't taken the, the benchmarker yet, and we have 16 kindergarten students, and 14 of those 16 kindergarten students are considered at risk as of today. So again, we, we get our kids coming in, and we bring them afar away, a long way while we have them, so we have some work to do. So we'll use that information to help us set up math groups and also to provide the intervention program that comes with the program. We're, as a council, we're looking at grade 5 to see if we are going to do some departmentalizing, where one teacher teaches math, one teacher teaches writing, similar to what Manamit does. So we're in the process of looking into that and how it would work within our school. And the other two are the two areas that I, I talked a little bit about as well. So those are a lot of the things that we're doing. There's more things that we're doing. And I'm going to pass the mic over, or slide the mic over, to Katie and Amy, and they're going to talk a little bit about our Safe and Supportive School initiative.
One of the initiatives that we had this summer was taking a responsive classroom course, so most of our staff partaken, partook in this class, and it talked about the core beliefs of responsive classroom, and we've been implementing this theory since the first day of school. So a little bit about responsive classroom is, in the morning, we all start off with a morning meeting, and that helps set up the day for the students, and it really prepares them for the rest of the day. After lunch and recess, we have quiet time, which is five to six minutes for the students to really reset their brains and get them ready for the afternoon of learning. And at the end of the day, we have a closing circle to end the day on a positive note and reflect on the academics and the social learning that we've been doing. Another part of responsive classroom is the positive common language that not only the classroom teachers are using, but also the specialists in lunch and recess staff. And what's really great is not only were the classroom teachers part of the responsive classroom course, but we also had some paraprofessionals in the course as well. So we've been using it consistently since the first day of school.
Okay. Set on? Okay. A couple other things that we've done this year. We have a BCBA and an adjustment counselor, so they've been doing a lot of preventative work in the classroom, so that's been helping us with some behavior interventions. Some other things that we're doing is the school psychologists and the adjustment counselor are coming into the classrooms once a week, and they're teaching the zones of regulation. So that's a lot of preventative work, too, where students are be, being able to identify some emotions and prevent some of the unexpected behavior in the classroom. We also have set up some transitional spaces inside of the classroom and outside of the classroom, so you'll see kids using tools, sensory tools inside the classroom and also outside of the classroom.
Just to piggyback on that, one of the reasons why we went with responsive classroom and really included this as part of our school improvement plan is teachers were expressing and frustrated and communicating that they were losing time on learning because of unexpected behaviors from students within the school. And we had a lot of students that were not quite emotionally ready to be in school, and throughout the day were struggling, and so we went with more of a preventative, preventative model to try to, one, create a nice, safe environment for them, one was more therapeutic for all students, and one that really worked on trying to respect the child as the child, as the learner, who he is. In responsive classroom, when we talk about that positive language, it's all about respect, respect for the teacher to the student and the student to the teacher. So just creating that foundation, and then being, being able to teach these skills to the children, and when children are ready to learn the self-regulation skills. One of the things I, I talk about, I talked about last week with my staff was, we, through zones of regulation, there's a, a piece that, a lesson that we use that talks about the size of the problem. When you have a small problem, and because of the way you react to that problem, it can become a larger problem or continue to be a small problem. And so I use that when I'm doing my discipline conferences, which are really therapeutic conferences. But the neat thing was Lori Rush, my school psychologist, and I were with a group of boys that had an incident on the playground, and they came back at us and said, "You know what? That was a really small problem that we turned into a really big problem." And I said, "You know what?" And I looked at Lori and I said, "It's working." So it's, it's slow, you know, some days are better than others, but we're, we're really proud, and the teachers have worked really hard to make this go well in their classrooms. So thank you for all the work that you've done, if anyone's at home watching. Our next goal is our response to intervention process, and Katie Tessitore is going to talk about that.
Okay. So over the summer, Kristen met with DSAC, the District School and, and School and Assistance Center. So in meeting with the center, Kristen, Kristen has developed a, a plan for RTI this year, so our meeting format is a little different this year. Teachers are going to come into the meeting with a set group of students that they're going to talk about, and by the end of this meeting, the RTI meeting, we'll have a measurable goal for that cycle, and we'll meet back again and see the progress on that cycle and make other goals or other plans for those students. Kristen had talked about the Title 1 support. We've been putting a lot of title support, Title 1 support in the upper grades for small group intervention based on the park scores and benchmark assessment and the district-determined measure for math. Also, this year, our school psychologist has given each teacher a social-emotional screening pilot, which is, every classroom teacher is going to fill out a screener for students to identify students at risk for social and emotional interventions. Through that, Lori, our school psychologist, will identify students who need support in the classroom or outside of the classroom. And Mrs. Wilson also talked about the intervention schedule, and teachers are now double-dosing students, so they're getting more support in the classroom as well. And then the last thing was, we're utilizing Symphony Math to identify students that, who are borderline or at risk, and they'll be using Symphony Math for 45 minutes a week in the classroom.
Thank you. And finally, Nicole, and we had a couple of parents that weren't able to join us today, but Nicole's going to take over, and she's, she's going to talk about how our, our last goal, provide opportunities to support and communicate with families.
Okay, so the first point listed on that slide is actually in this binder, and one of our school council members, she's a mom of a student, Sandra Carlin, is collecting, she's receiving photos and updates from teachers on a weekly basis, compiling that in an electronic newsletter and sending that out on Fridays. Actually, I think she sends it to Kristen, and Kristen sends it to the email addresses of parents that she has. So should I send this along and they can peek through it, or?
Sure.
We are, as a school community, the classrooms are, the classroom teachers are trying to create two classroom celebrations a year that parents and family members are invited to, and we invite them in, and they can participate in some way in the learning in the classroom. A big one we had in the middle of October, early October, was homework night, and it was super successful. We had invited students and families to come into the classroom, to come into the building one night after school. It was actually sponsored by the Zion Lutheran Church. They had provided materials for us to, for students to create homework boxes. They had provided the materials for 100 students to make homework boxes, and actually provided eight or 10 church members to kind of facilitate the activity. It was really neat. So we had a really good turnout. The students came in, they had these boxes that they decorated, they were able to fill those boxes with pencils and crayons and scissors and, and math manipulatives and whatever they needed to be successful at homework at home. And then they broke out into workshops. We had a reading workshop, a math workshop, and a word study workshop. And so Kristen had set up a schedule of rotation, and parents and students would go to the math workshop, and there would be a teacher who volunteered her time that evening to teach them best practices and math fact fluency, and they would get all the materials they need for that practice at home. And then they would go to the word study workshop, and there they would learn about our word study program, some strategies for homework in that, in that area, and then they would move on to the reading workshop, which is the one that, that I facilitated. And basically, that was just, I modeled a read aloud and showed parents how to encourage critical thinking when you're doing readings, and explicit and implicit questioning and, and things like that, and they walked away with some materials on decoding and best practices for comprehension and a list of recommended books. And it was just a really successful night, and we had a pretty good turnout. We would like to see more, but hopefully that will be an annual thing. Home visits, we have an initiative now where Kristen and our school psychologist Lori Rush are visiting the homes of students who are not able to get to Hedge and get access to all the support and information that they need, so we're trying to reach out in that way. Class Dojo is, I'm not sure if you know what Class Dojo is. I feel like everyone should know Class Dojo. It's kind of twofold. It's, it's an online tool, and it's used for behavior management, and also it has a social, a private parent communication or social media piece, if you would call it that. The behavior management is, is not for tonight, but it, there's these little emoji guys, and it's just a cute little strategy, but there's, if a parent registers through Dojo, not only do they get real-time information on their student's progress, but there's a, there's a portal piece where teachers can take photographs and upload video and put updates in real-time. So we'll do that all day. If we have great lessons or we have some sharing, we'll take a photo, we'll put it on Dojo, and Mom and Dad, it's, it's kind of like a private Facebook for just that class, and Mom and Dad can, can look at any time during the day, and it's, it's a really neat thing. It also has a communication messaging portal, so personally, all of, most of my communication with parents is through the Dojo portal, because they, they can reach me at any time, day or night, and it's just a really good tool. And then we have lots of volunteers in the building that was worth mentioning. We have volunteers coming in to help manage recess time. We have volunteers coming in to help with math facts, Mr. Mayor. We have volunteers that come in and read with students, so we'd like to see that, that base grow, but we do have a lot of folks coming in from the community to help us out.
Great. So that ends our formal presentation for this evening, and that's a little picture of one of our student award ceremonies with those cute little faces. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to take any questions that you have for us.
Very good, thank you. Anybody? Yep. Ms. Badger?
I don't really have a question, but just a statement. I love that homework night you were talking about, and I actually, it's funny, because at the South Elementary School, they were talking about the homework night and how that, that, that's something that they wanted to do at their school, and then they were also mentioning the parent leadership conference that we had in the spring, and how that was really like great tools. It's so nice to see you educating the parents, because, I mean, we get those questions all the time from people who are like, "I don't know how to do this math problem. I don't know how to, I don't understand. Like, this is how I did it. Why can't I do it this way?" So it's nice to see that being done by all the schools.
But actually, the homework box is an old tradition from Title 1 that we've done, we did years ago, so we incorporated, incorporated that into some of the key pieces that parents had asked us about, and math being one of them, that constantly comes up. Yeah. Thanks.
Dr. Sorenson?
Very good report, a lot of very positive things. The Dojo thing sounds pretty interesting. Could you bring up, but I apologize for bringing up something perhaps negative, maybe I'm wrong. Could you bring up Slide 4, please, 4 of 11? It's the math scores that you referenced earlier today. It's the fourth one in...
The park ones or the district ones?
That one right there, that one right there, the math performance score. Now, now, I could be reading this wrong, and if I am, I certainly, certainly straighten me out here.
Sure thing.
But if I look at grade 3 in the spring of 14, I'm reading that 56% of those students scored 70 or above. And in the spring of 15, they're now fourth graders, they got worse. And in the spring of 16, they're now fifth graders, and their score continues to go down. What is happening with that group?
That's a good point, and that's another piece of Hedge School that I failed to talk about in my introduction of school, is even though in the state of Massachusetts, our transancy rate might not be as high as other big cities, when you look at Plymouth, we have students coming and going. So that cohort that is in fifth grade, only 10 of those students in that 25% were with us in kindergarten, and eight of those students joined us that current year, and another seven students were there the year before. So that group really only represents 10 of the original kids.
All right, so that's not really longitudinal.
No, and that's the one thing about Hedge, is you can't really look at our cohorts, and that's why we, we try to focus on the student growth percentile. It's a really good question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nice job, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your support, and thank you for our additional staff we got this year. We couldn't do the work without our new adjustment counselor, our BCBA and our MSN, so thank you very much.
Very good. We got to get your book back to you.
Sure thing.
We're going to keep it. I told, we're going to keep it. I can't look at it now, but... Now we have our...
I can take it, Kristen. I'll bring it. Thank you.
Capital Improvement Expenditure Recommendations, and we have our director, Mr. Montron.
Good evening, Arthur. Good afternoon, this evening, a list of capital improvements to be submitted to the town in the Capital Outlay Expenditures Committee. We are looking at total capital requests of $10,134,347. We have broken it down into the four categories that we always do, the building repairs and renovations, in the amount of $2,387,697. That is comprised of 20 projects. The first of which is repairs to the former town hall, the existing town hall, it's not a former yet, in the amount of $900,585. This pro, this is to do repairs and renovations to the existing structure so that the school, school department administration can move into that building. school department administration can move into that building. I don't know how you want to do this, if you want to do questions as we go along, or...
Arthur, if, if you could, could you walk through some of those items that comprise the nine hundred thousand dollars?
Okay. What I did is I, I took this list from the town's infrastructure report, similar to our infrastructure report. They had, they had the same company come in and do the same type of study for all of their buildings. So there's all kinds of things in here. There's a structural, structural follow-up study for the roofing area, asphalt, seal coating, replacing some pavers, pointing brickwork. The big items going down the list is that there are some things that if you're going to move into town hall, you don't want to do piecemeal. So some of these are projects that were probably funded this year, two years from now, two years from then. We grouped them all, such as painting. If you're gonna paint the building, then get it all painted before they move in. Replace the carpeting, the flooring before you go in. And the painting and patching of the interior walls and the drywall, you're looking at sixty-three thousand dollars. Replacing carpeting and, and flooring materials, you're looking at another, almost ninety thousand dollars. And painting ceilings, another twenty-three thousand. So it's, it's quite an extensive list. Plus, you have a replacement of an emergency diesel generator at forty-four thousand. Patching interior walls at a hundred thousand. Replacing vinyl tile at twenty-three thousand. And replacing all the flooring materials was a total of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So you're looking at a pretty extensive list.
I could, through, Mr. Begley. So Arthur, this is, RKG did this report?
EMG did this.
EMG. So basically, what they've done is they've done exactly what we have done for our buildings.
Yes.
They walk through, they, they do a timeline of when to expect
Yes.
renovation, or repair, or replacement. So I think one of the issues that, that, when I saw this list, you know, we, we were thinking initially, Mr. Begley, that maybe two fifty, three hundred thousand dollars that we would need in preparation to move into town hall, knowing that there were some things that had to be done, the obvious, the carpet, the painting. But as, as Mr. Montron has, has, you know, reviewed here somewhat tonight, there are a number of areas that need to be taken a look at. I think one concern we have is the brick needs to be repointed, which is the exterior of the building. The, the, the heating system does need a look at, the HVAC system does need a look at, as well as exterior, you know, painting. Not, you know, not only do we have interior, but there are some exterior painting features that, that were also identified. In addition, you know, that building is the hub of the network for the town of Plymouth, which would then be the hub for the network for the school department. So that emergency generation is pretty crucial to the operation of, of our existence there. So we would have to, you know, make some decision as to what would rise to the priority of, of, of work. I think another thing that we haven't really addressed, and, you know, you know, just kind of walking through, is we'd have to restructure some of those spaces to be able to accommodate the different office types that we would require that are different than town hall features that we see today. So a lot of the offices are, they're not, they're, they're big spaces that have cabinets and so on. You know, our special education department would, would need some walls put up. Our human resources department needs some walls put up. There are more sensitive areas that we'd have to take a look at, and how they would be able to exist, and how we'd have to modify. So, you know, I think from our perspective, it would be absolutely wonderful for the school department to be in that space, because it's centrally located, and I think it's a, it's wonderful to, for us to be by a school. I think the dilemma that we have in, in bringing this forward tonight is, I mean, that's a lot of money to put on the, on the table, a lot of money to discuss. And, I mean, technically, this has to go to town meeting, and, and, and it has to survive the town meeting process with other competing interests. So it, it is a big item, and it rises, it's right at the top, and timing is, is an important piece, because town hall will, I, I think they're about two months behind town hall construction timeline, which would put them October, November. So this would have to, this work would, would have to be done in the winter of, of next, of next year, which would be a little bit more of a, of a challenge. If we did move into town hall and, and this did work out, I, I don't think we'd move in until the following school year. So, but again, I, I feel very uncomfortable trying to be responsible for, you know, for budgets and the amount of things that are on, on the table right now for funding, that we would, we would, you know, recommend a nine hundred thousand dollar capital expense coming, coming through this process. So I know this is just one item on a very long list of items that we need throughout the school district.
If I can ask, again, on the roof, what, what was the additional issue they found with the roof, that you found with the roof?
The problem, well, it's not even a problem, because first you have to do a study. But it appears that the buttressing of the roof in one particular area doesn't meet the current code for building, and it slides. So the study is to look to see what would happen with that roof to, to make it more secure.
And that's, sounds expensive.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And is that, so, so we're doing the study?
Right.
But we don't know what the study's gonna come back yet.
You don't know what the study's gonna come back with.
If the study comes back and says, yes, there is a significant problem with the roof, that would be above and beyond the nine hundred thousand.
Yes.
Do we have any idea, like, worst case?
No whatsoever.
Okay. But it could grow significantly.
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
My good question is, so we've got this option of the nine hundred thousand dollars if we get it, right? And I'm looking through this list and yesterday, and I didn't see anything for central office. What do we have? So what needs to be done at this, like, current central office? If, say, you know, down the line, what do you, I mean, what do you see in the next few years?
Are you saying, are you asking what we need just to maintain the current offices?
Yep.
You know, Arthur and, and his team have done a wonderful job of maintaining our, our building. You know, we, we do what needs to be done. I would say that our office is in, is, is in decent shape. I mean, I don't see any expenditure that would come in front of you that, it would be unforeseen expenditure at this point. But, I mean, we've, we've kept it up. I, I think our office probably looks in, in better shape than it has been in years, but it's just, it's, it's just, it's not located in the best, best spot for us.
Not in the best place.
The structure of central office itself is in, in great shape. The rooftop units are, are getting older, but they're still in good shape. The roofing, we had an issue with part of the roof maybe four years ago. That was repaired, but other than that, the building is fairly sound.
We had a termite issue, right?
We got termite issues in every school building you own. It's come and go. We just, that's part of our pest control. Bees and...
All right. So why don't we, we're doing this a little more interactively this time than we would normally do, only because this item may change things tonight. So why don't you continue with the rest, unless someone has...
Honestly, the rest of the list is the same list that was presented last year and voted on last year in that priority. So I didn't change anything. I just took the projects that we had funded from last year and removed them because of this first project, because that was gonna be such a big, big project. So going down the remainder of the list, you've got floor tile replacement cold spring for a hundred and forty-one thousand, six twenty-five. Repaving asphalt areas and creating spaces over at South Elementary in the amount of ninety-five thousand, one twenty-two. Replacing windows, one part a year at West School for fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty. Repaving asphalt areas at Mannamet Elementary in the amount of sixteen thousand, seven eighty-nine. Did my cheetah? Field renovations at HEDGE Elementary in the amount of sixty-three thousand, seventy-four dollars. Repaving asphalt areas at Indian Brook in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and fifty. Replacing the gym floor at PCIS in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred dollars. Resurfacing the gymnasium floor at South Elementary in the amount of thirty-seven thousand and eighty dollars, as well as Indian Brook for the same amount, and Federal Furnace at the same amount. Those are all rubber floors.
The South we resurfaced, I know, I can't remember the other ones, but South we resurfaced a few years ago.
South we did resurface a few years ago, but it's, it's...
That peels, it peels off.
It was an insurance claim. So it was really kind of sanded and painted.
Okay.
But it, it still needs some work.
Okay.
Create additional parking at West Elementary in the amount of fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Replace exterior windows in classrooms and the cafeteria at Federal Furnace School in the amount of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine dollars.
Now is that all the windows, or...
That is all of the exterior windows at Federal Furnace. West up above was doing one part a year and moving around the building. Their quote was to go through and replace them all.
Okay. So the two hundred and thirty-eight is to replace them all in one shot?
Yes.
What if we broke that up?
Ah, that can be broken up.
Would we get it?
One of the reasons it's down lower is because it can be, it can be staggered over time. In all of the satellite schools, the windows are all, all the same. I mean, it's, you can go to any one of the buildings. They're all in the same shape. And, you know, it's just a matter of trying to get the program moving to start, start replacing some of them.
And this two hundred and thirty-eight was a quote from a contractor or something to do them all at one time?
Yes, that was from a local contractor.
Do we think, well, you would, you would know, it's not a fair question, but, what the hell, I'll ask it anyway. If you, do you think that we would get as good a price? So if you divided it in half, are we gonna lose the discount where even though we have less the number of windows, we really don't see half the savings?
You get some economy of scale doing the entire project at one time. But in the long run, I mean, we've done lots of projects where we've staged things over years, and it might cost you a little more, but you end up in the same result.
Okay.
Then we have some more asphalting here at PCIS in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, three hundred. Carpet replacement at South Middle School, thirty-seven thousand, six seventy-two. Request for additional card readers here at PCIS for twenty-three thousand, five seventy-seven. Refurbish and refinish wood floors at Nathaniel Morton in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, three forty-four. Replace IMC carpet and vinyl tiling at PCIS in the amount of sixty-one thousand, six nineteen. Replace classroom curtains with vertical blinds at PCIS for fifteen, four, four ninety-three. And field renovations at PCIS in the amount of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight.
Okay. On two of the field renovations, so on the one at HEDGE for the sixty-three thousand, is that the playground? Because a few years ago, we redid the whole playground.
It's not the playground, it's the field behind the playground.
Behind the playground.
It's in a rough shape.
It's, it's really a sandbox.
Okay.
This is, it really is. I mean, it's, it's just really in bad shape. It's to go through and get some lumen there and try and actually get some grass growing and...
Okay. And then the one for PCIS, is that the soccer field?
The one for PCIS is the field out here, yes.
It does look pretty bad, that one. And they get a lot of activity on there. It seems every time we drive by, there's another sport out there.
Constant, yeah.
Okay. That's the list of the, the rest of them are the deferred projects, right?
Yes. And then we have vehicles and equipment. We have to replace a two thousand and nine SUV in the amount of thirty-six thousand. Replace a bucket truck for our electricians, eighty-six thousand, four sixty-nine. And purchase two propane school buses in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
And how many buses will that give us now, Mr. Caston?
We, we currently have nine buses, but we really need to replace two, take two out of service. We, we're spending a, a large amount of money. I just processed the bill for seven thousand dollars for welding and frame repair on one of our buses. So we have two that are really, really tired.
Bad shape.
If you recall, we started off with six, and we were hoping to retire a few buses. The demands that we've had with sports and field trips, and, and it's great to see the, you know, the students using the buses. We're, we really need nine, and we have no spares. We've had situations where we've had to cancel, cancel trips because we've not had enough buses. They've been out of service. And again, we, we'd like to go propane.
How many propane do we have now?
We have three. Two, two large propaines, and we have a smaller mini propane, which is actually taking the students every day from the HEDGE District to West Elementary.
And the bonded projects at the end there?
The last two are roofing projects for West Elementary in Indian Brook. These have been in here since the HVAC renovations. We've, we've had good luck in keeping up with the roofs, but these are something that, the bonding projects is part of the capital outlay project. Really need to get those out there ahead of time. And, I mean, it'd be nice to start getting a couple of these roofs, or one of these roofs a year, but we're still in, in decent shape with both of those roofs. But it's really an awareness thing.
So the, the, the two point six million there, we can just put off to the side?
No, I wouldn't put it off to the side at all, no. I would continue leaving it on the list. And if town meeting should feel that they want to go into the bonded projects, we have bonded projects, the town does, every department does, and they kind of pit against each other, and, and they're on the list. And, you know, should they get more critical, then we make a bigger fight for it.
Okay. So now we have a discussion here as to whether we want to make any changes to our list. We know that we have other concerns that are coming up that Dr. Maestis touched on. We have probably fields at South that are gonna require additional funding that we're gonna have to go to town meeting for, to finish that project. At the same time, we'll be asking for this and anything else that comes up between now and then. So I would look to have a discussion whether we think, you know, this is the list we want to go with, or do we want to reconsider our plans to go for the former town hall, or I'm interested in having a discussion. Okay. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I have reservations about, including the nine hundred thousand for the renovations of the old town hall. I thought it'd be a good location for central office and more space, but the costs to move in are triple what we thought they were, and it sounds like it could even go quadruple. I saw it said and done. I know central office is looking forward to possibly moving over there. Um, I know central office is looking forward to possibly moving over there, but I have reservations about moving into that building with this new information that's come to light, so I have a, I would like to take that out with the idea that we don't go to the old town hall.
I would have to agree. I, I, I'm concerned also, I do think it'll become a money pit. There are other things to consider about it, though. So Dr. Maestis and I had a meeting, uh, the other day with, uh, Mr. Chairman Travaris and, uh, Town Manager Origi and, um, and others. And we were talking about this and other things, and it came up, their concerns would be that, uh, they were kind of counting on that building, us going in there, and they were using it for storage and also meeting space. So, we're kind of, we're solving a problem for us, but inadvertently causing potentially a problem for them, so that's something to consider as well.
On this topic, you said something this evening that I hadn't heard before. You had said when you made the presentation of the nine-hundred thousand dollars, that the study suggested, uh, when it was done, that these items would be phased in over a period of time. But since we're the new tenant, it makes sense to try to get it done all, all up front. I got that part. However, let's go back to that, that premise. Do you see anything on that list of substantial, of, no, strike that. Do you see anything that, that is a substantial amount that could get us, that could be put off? And, uh, and, and I think, and I think the underlying factor here from my thinking, and I'm following what Mr. Morgan is saying and what the chair is saying, these other needs that we have are all direct services to students, gym floors, you know, if renovating this building surplants those, I'm not for it.
Right, yeah.
But I want to see if there's any way that we can get our cake and eat it too.
Yeah, we like that.
Yep.
Would the sale from the existing, um, central office be considered in the funding for the projects that we need? I know it's after the fact, but I'm just wondering if that could be...
That, that would go into, the, the proceeds from the sale will go into a fund that has, uh, that has to be spent on buildings, so, but the town has to approve how and, and when it gets expended.
Is that a step that we can take to ask them to, to earmark some of that money?
It goes into a different account, because we brought that up with Mount Pleasant, so it'll go into a different account, but in the meantime, the, the expenditure still has to be made...
Right.
...to go into the building and start renovating it, and it becomes a question of timing. Well, you, obviously you have to be in someplace before you can sell the other place, um, so town meeting would still have to advance you the money, approve the money, and then later on, Lynn or someone would adjust whether...
It would be easier to swallow if you knew that that money could be earmarked for that.
The estimate on the old building, selling question.
The nine-hundred.
What's the latest?
Oh, the, oh, the sale, I think they said it's only about a million.
Value, the value? You mean the, the value of, of our office?
I think it was less than a million.
Yeah.
The assessed value is...
Half a million.
Half a million?
Oh, yeah.
That's the assessed value, not to say that that's what it would sell for.
Sell for.
In trying to answer Dr. Sorenson's question, what I would tell you is, the FY eighteen capital requests are original items from this infrastructure report that weren't done between FY sixteen and eighteen, and those alone total five-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. The ones that we looked at going out in time were, uh, between fiscal nineteen and thirty-five, and those totaled three-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, seven thirty-one. So, I mean, if you were to drop everything that was going out, you would drop three-hundred-and-eighty, eighty-four thousand off that line.
We're still looking at half a million dollars.
You're still looking at a half a million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, Ms. Badger, did you want to add to that? I didn't mean to step on you.
No, you're fine, it's okay. It's not that important. Think it changes anything?
So, looking at the list and the discussion we just had, um, personally, I'm, I'm, you know, I've been bugging people for years that I wanted to move into the town hall, because I do think it's better, I think it, actually, I wanted to, I wanted to be in the new town hall, but when we got bumped out of there, I thought the old town hall was a good constellation prize, so it just made sense. It's in the center of town, it's, it just makes sense. It would give us more than enough space so that their offices are not right on top of each other and they're crammed in there. But for this amount of money, when it was three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars and we were selling the building for five-hundred, um, you know, it made a little more sense. But now, with nine-hundred thousand and the potential, you know, when someone tells me that they have a floating roof, I don't know.
Sounds like a bad idea.
That sets off a few alarms.
New technology.
Yeah.
If you're on, if you're on a, on a, a tectonic plate, probably would work out.
Yeah, so, I think what we're hearing is, uh, you know, it might be wise to fall back and group around the items that we have that directly, directly impact student services. Also, the fields at South, we know that we're going to need additional money, so, um, with the taxpayers in mind, I think we should, I personally think we should step back from the town hall. Ms. Badger?
In your conversation that you had the other day, what was their solution to those meeting spaces? So what will...
They didn't have one.
They didn't have a solution to losing those meeting spaces?
They were surprised that we were, you know, even...
Thinking.
Starting to freak out that the amount was going up, up, up.
Well, the roof is an issue.
Remember, we did tour the building twice.
Code violation with the roof, I mean, that's going to become, uh, and it's an older infrastructure, so with a code issue, that's something that needs to be looked at and addressed, and that's, like you said, that's going to inflate costs. Huge. I mean, it could end up being a...
It may become a huge distraction, we'll find ourselves going back to town meeting, arguing for additional money to fix our administration building, um, at the same time we want it for services we want to spend on children. So, Ms. Badger?
Sorry, I'm all for and I believe, I, I agree with what everybody's saying at this table, my question is, what does the town have to spend to be able to get rid of that building? Because you, can you sell a floating roof building? I would think you probably couldn't.
Before we go too far with the floating roof, if I can kick in a minute.
Kick in.
The life of its own, by now, yes.
I haven't, I haven't looked at the, up, going on what I was told, okay? There is a section of the roof.
Okay, section of...
It's a section of the roof.
Regardless.
The whole roof's not going to blow away.
Okay.
Okay? It's a section of the roof that needs to be looked at. Uh, it, it's not the whole thing, and it's not, you know, we're not going to do a Wizard of Oz, we're in Kansas movie. Uh, but it is, it is a concern in that all the, all the infrastructure report really says is that you need a study of that.
Yeah.
And I don't know how in-depth that is or what it's going to be in the end, so...
I guess my biggest concern is, okay, we step away from the building and we, the town itself still has to spend that money to make sure that building is sellable, so I don't know...
Not necessarily, it depends on what a developer wants to do with it.
I guess, take it down.
Look at the armory, the armory, they practically rebuilt it.
I have no doubt in my mind the building is sellable just as it is.
Well, because it's a great spot.
Yeah.
I think there'd be quite a bit of competition.
Yeah.
And that would be the selectmen's...
Yes.
...area, I don't want to overstep our...
Yep, just thinking about all the things that could come back at us, that's all.
If I may just summarize, because we've discussed this before, and I just want to make it clear to everybody who's listening, we think it's a great idea. If we could move into that building, it, we all think it's a great idea, but when we saw the price list, we, we discussed this maybe a month ago, it, it, you know, we can't have what we want if we don't have the money to buy it, and that's simply, simply put.
Especially when our mission is to take care of the kids and, yeah.
So, I, so we should probably have, take a motion on this, because we've taken votes to say we want the building, we need a vote to say we no longer want the building.
Thanks, but no thanks.
Right?
Yeah.
Basically, yeah.
Because we did vote on it at least two at times.
And, and to that point, Mr. Begley, I did send a letter to, um, the board of selectmen indicating probably a month and a half ago that we were interested in the building.
Yeah, when it was three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, yeah.
So we'd have to send a letter to retract that.
Due to the...
Yeah, will they fix it for us?
Well, they were supposed to be fixing it for us.
It's all part of the same pool.
They want to keep, yeah, it's, it's idle, but also if they want to keep their records in and they want to use some meeting space and, you know, it's, it's not just our responsibility, then it belongs to them as well.
I'm, through, Mr. Begley, I, I, I do believe that, uh, they would consider it to be coming, that the dollars will be coming from the same pot.
It is, yeah.
I, I do believe that if, 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 you know, it's going to be five-hundred thousand to move in, uh, or nine-hundred thousand or more to fix everything, so, but I do believe that, um, the dollars, uh, whether it be, you know, from, from, from town, uh, any kind of town fundraising, I think they would approach it as, it's still the same, still the same source of, of money. I, I don't know that they would approach it any differently.
And I can just say, I used to be a town meeting member, and nothing would aggravate you more than when, um, you approve a project, and then the next year, they're back for another two-hundred thousand, three-hundred thousand, and you knew that they probably knew that on day one. In this case, we know it on day one, so we, if we have a motion, I would entertain a motion to remove that from the list. Who would like to make the motion, if there is a motion? Otherwise, it's going to stay on the list.
I'll make the motion.
I make a motion to remove the renovations to the former town hall from the capital improvements report.
Do we have a second?
Mr., I just, just bring up one point.
Yeah, I'm wondering, I have a question too.
We probably, the committee probably wants to, um, recommend the list, with the exception of...
My point was rearrange the list.
Okay.
My suggestion was, I thought you were going to say it, remove it from the top of the list.
Yeah.
It should still be on the list.
Put it at the bottom.
Perhaps the bottom.
Yep.
Because I think it should be known, that this is the reason why we're backing out of this building.
I agree.
The only problem there is it holds open that we're going to, if they've had the money and they approved the whole list, we're going to move into there? I thought the point was we didn't want to spend, expend the money if, uh, we didn't have to.
It's still...
If you move it down the list and they approve the whole list, it's...
They never do.
They never do.
Well, we, yeah, we won't, there's so many competing interests on the town side, they won't make it.
So, so we move it down the list, it doesn't get approved.
It was.
We still expressed interest in, in moving into a building that there's no funding for, so now they move into the new building, the old building's sitting there, they're waiting for us to move in, but we don't have the money to fix it up. Shouldn't we just tell them sooner rather than later that we don't want it and that that way they can sell it or do whatever they want to do with it? I'm asking you, I shouldn't be, I'm sorry.
Well, no, my follow-up would be, Capital Outlay Committee can rearrange the list, they don't have to buy our recommendation, but if it's not on the list, I don't believe they can put things on the list.
No.
No, they can't.
No, it has to be what we...
But what do we do?
I, I think, I think when, when people begin to realize that this building is going to sit idle...
Yeah.
...for a period of time, things change a little bit. So that's why, personally, I think it should be on the list, and Capital Outlay wants to, to raise it to the top and fund it, as long as they don't take away our other things. I want my cake and eat it too, I said it before.
Trying to keep your foot in the door on this.
On this, yes.
Okay. What about, didn't we say that we needed to add the fields as Plan B, right, for the, um, South High would have to be added to the list?
Well, the, the way, we, we have, we have two big, big issues that are, are, are on the horizon. One was trying to figure out what we're going to do at town hall. The other is, um, the fields at Plymouth South High School, because right now we're about sixty-five percent done with the project, and we're really trying to project what we need to do to complete that project. The specification originally was to put turf fields on all three fields, the, the football field, um, combination field is complete, that's turf. The next option, uh, was to take a look at the other two fields at the entry to the campus. The initial spec was to put those, uh, and install turf on those two, uh, spaces. As time has gone on, since the vote had, has passed town meeting and also through the voters, um, the cost, um, has gone up dramatically, even from north to, to today. So, um, we've basically, um, the total value of the three projects, the value of, of the senior center, value of north, the value of south, we've had to work within the total project, overall cost of one ninety-nine. Keeping in mind that we've been reimbursed significant amount of dollars for north...
Over ninety-five million.
Yeah.
About ninety-five million dollars of that. So, the premise is that we can't go beyond the one ninety-five of total project cost. So right now, we are at a point where we've, we've, we have some contingency dollars that we believe that we can apply to the total, uh, cost for turf fields. The turf fields would cost about four million. We probably will be able to have about two million of, in contingency, so it leaves about two million dollars that we'd have to raise in appropriate to be able to put turf on those two remaining fields. So, knowing that we have that discussion, that's probably going to hit town meeting floor, knowing that we're going to have a town hall renovation for us to move in on town meeting floor, I mean, it's, uh, we're in a, in a pickle.
Right, so, so one of the recommendations we had gotten was we should add them to this list and then also do it as a separate article, right?
It's a possibility that you could go, there's two routes that we can take to actually try to fund those fields. One is through capital, one is through reauthorization from town meeting to extend borrowing to another two million. So it's a matter of what strategy or, or what, what makes the best sense.
And, and did we want, did we want to do both and then withdraw one or the other? Is that way they go, both go through the process?
It's possible that we could, uh, put them, um, I mean, capital improvement might just knock it right off, the CEO, the, uh, capital improvement, uh, you know, prioritization committee might just take it right out.
So even though we have field renovations for some of the other schools, that's a category, this is, this is a category beyond that, because it's much bigger than just renovating and totally replacing it and adding a new type and everything else.
Absolutely, and, and then again, I think it depends on how the committee would, would rank it, because you...
Yeah, we don't want it to get dropped.
It would have to be ranked at the top for it to survive, I, I would say.
All right. So we will never, so we were not going to recommend to add it to this list, we're going to do that as a separate effort, a separate article. Then, um, now we're left with just taking, leaving our options open and just moving it all the way down to the bottom of the list.
Was there a motion before, or there was no second?
There was no second on the motion, so it's still sitting on the table to, and in a minute, I'm going to ask if there's a second for the original motion, but, in other words, just to remove it from the list.
That's the motion, without the second.
Without the second, it was to just remove it from the list, right, Mr. Morgan? To just restate our intentions.
Absolutely, yes.
Can I just follow up?
Yes, Ms. Badger.
So, I know we've had conversations in the past about maybe trying to find out if legally we can still act within that ninety-five million dollars that we've got back, but we're sure there's no way that we can...
We went down that road already.
Okay, I didn't know if that's what you, I was, I think, I thought that's what you were saying, but I wasn't really sure.
We had a meeting and we were advised that, um, while the wording of the article does not specifically say total value of the project, that's what's implied from an accounting point of view, so it's the total value of the project. Doesn't matter that the net to, the net cost to Plymouth taxpayers is a fraction of a hundred and ninety-nine million, because you got almost a hundred million back.
Yep.
Um, that doesn't matter, it's still, even though it's not, you're not on the hook for it, it's not standing out there as something you might get whacked with as an outstanding debt, so you need to cover all bases. Um, you've already been paid for it.
Yeah.
Um, it's reimbursed for it, I should say.
And I think one of the things that, um, you know, if we were to present a, another article or a vote, uh, for the same type of project, knowing how the MSBA's operation has been revised since the initial vote language was put on the table, we, we, we would, we would write, we would write it differently because... we would, we would write, we would write it differently, because the MSBA, when South Middle School was built, was a 20-year bonding partnership. So, we'd go out to bond, and, and the MSBA and the town of Plymouth would pay back that, that loan over 20 years. The way the MSBA, and keep in mind, the MSBA would also absorb their portion of the interest.
Yep.
So, what's happened over time is they, they've really realized that that's really not an efficient way. If you have the money, and they've had it, pay the debt down, they don't incur the, the interest rate, and the town actually got reimbursement. We have a real-time, close to real-time reimbursement, we submit a bill, and it gets paid within a month. And it's, and it gets, and that's what's happened from the beginning. North High is paid off in terms of what the MSBA's obligation to us was on North. South High School, it's, it's, it's in that same queue, and it gets reimbursed rather quickly.
And even in the bonding, if you go into the general laws, and you go into the various chapters that pertain to bonding, it mentions what Dr. Maestis just mentioned, where you would go out and bond the whole project, and incur interest costs and everything, and then you'd get payback for it. They haven't updated that since this new Massachusetts School Building Authority process, which is extremely successful, but we're still treating it like we're going to get stiffed, so we got to cover the whole project. So, anyway, long story short, to answer your original question, that ain't happening, so we're not going to get anything else on there. However, do we have to reopen that, or that's one way of doing it, or can we just do it as a new article, and treat it like a new project?
There's another way of doing it, my advisor to my right suggested that maybe we move both of these projects, town hall and the fields at South, to the bonded projects.
Yeah, that's what I was...
I was just going to ask that question.
And, you know, Arthur's been doing this for a long time. So, I, you know, that's, that's another option that the committee has to, to walk through, to consider.
Like that for the fields, I don't know, but...
If you were, if you were to take both of these projects and move them under the bonded list, they basically stand on their own. Those projects are all separately funded, it's a bonding article for each one of them. It authorizes the finance director just to do the borrowing that she needs for that particular project. So, if you were to move the field and the town hall into the bonded area, as opposed to building repairs and renovations, they would stand alone as major capital projects, as opposed to a building repair and renovation.
Good. So, the fields, we could put down in the bonded area to cover what we need to do with the fields, rather than reopening what was there, which I think is better. I wouldn't, I don't really want to go back and reopen things. As far as the town hall, though, why, why, this is just me, why would, why would we put it into the bond category, go for bonding it? And then we'd have to argue it, and we want it, and we have to sell it and everything, we're going to probably lose the argument, and we don't really want it anyway. Well, we, we want it for selfish reasons, but for reality reasons, we're more...
I think it's start to, for the, it was the school.
Yeah, but we gave it up.
That's right, but that doesn't mean you can't get it back.
Well, you know, Mr. Begley, you know, going back to what Dr. Sorensen said, if, if there is, I mean, it could go to the, to the, to the bottom of the list of the capital projects, the town hall, and see whatever happens with that. But I think it would be pretty clear, be very clear, when capital comes in front of the committee, and also in front of town meeting, that it's on the bottom of the list for a reason. It's because the school department really didn't think it was
Worth doing.
something that would move forward. So, I think it...
Which will start a whole new discussion.
Actually, I think, I think the communication is, we have higher priorities.
Absolutely.
I like that.
Yes. So, so you could have a motion that really identifies where you place town hall renovation, and a motion to where you insert the fields itself.
I just think we're being too smart for our own good, because what, here's what'll happen, at the end of the Springtown meeting, it won't make the cut, right? They're moving out, now they got an empty building there.
Keep going.
It's kind of tripping into...
Forcing.
You're going to get into the same spot, I guess, at the end of the day, but unless somebody's going to come up with 900,000 or something to change our mind.
Arthur has a comment.
If it were me, having played with this for a couple of years now, I would, I would stand by my suggestion of moving them both into the bonded. My reasoning for moving town hall into the bonded is that, number one, it stands on its own merit. The argument for doing town hall is that it's a better space for central office, plus the town side needs storage and meeting rooms. If it's under the bonded projects, it becomes a joint venture as to whether or not both sides want to do it. It's very rare in capital outlay that the list we submit gets changed by the capital outlay committee or the town manager. Typically, they go right down in order of what this committee approves. So, if you were to go through and put town hall to the, you know, number 11, typically, we get somewhere in the neighborhood of 5, 600,000 dollars in capital repairs for building repairs and renovations. If you move it down below that, I don't think there's going to be too many people wanting to move it up. Where at least if it's under the bonded, you leave the discussion open, and you get both sides to, between now and town meeting, figure out exactly what it is they really want to do with town hall, and move forward with the discussion under the bonding.
Okay.
That makes sense.
That's just my opinion, but...
Well, I value your opinion, much more than mine.
Do we have to amend that motion?
Do you want to, so, we don't really need a motion to just have them change the list. We'll just accept the list with those modifications.
My only other question would be, under the bonded projects, what do you want for a priority? Now, you have four projects there.
Well, we know where the priority is for this one, because it's being on the bottom. We're still going to defend it. That's the thing I don't like, is we're still going to have to get up and fight for something that we're not passionate about.
So, we're going to end up with two roof replacements, the turf fields, and, and...
And town hall.
Town hall, you want to, you want to prioritize those four?
Right.
So, field.
Fields.
Well, the fields are number one.
The two roof replacements, and then town hall.
We're gonna, we're gonna, I'm going to ask if we can modify your motion to just amend the list as discussed, where we would move it down into the bonded, bonded groups with the field concerns we have. I don't want to write your motion, having the fields prioritized first, then the replacements, and last would be the town hall.
I think that he should withdraw his motion and then make that...
Well, it wasn't seconded, so he could modify.
So, do you ask him if it's seconded and then it dies, right?
Yeah. It was never seconded.
Right. He's giving him the courtesy of the floor.
I'm still giving him the floor and allowing him to change his...
Yeah, and I, I'm going to agree with him with that, so I'll amend my motion to, to move the renovations at the old town hall and the turf fields for South to the bonded projects, with the order of replacement, the fields at South, the roof replacement at West Elementary, and Indian Brook, followed by the renovations at the old town hall.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
We got an electronic vote here, so...
Oops.
Give me one, give me one second, I just got to get, it was moved by Mr. Morgan, seconded by...
Dr. Sorensen.
Sorensen, and the vote is coming up.
Sorry, we treated that a lot choppier than we normally do
It's okay.
when you're proposing. Okay, so that's unanimous.
Yes.
Just checking.
I promise, I won't forget. Thank you. We got that straightened out, and...
Thank you, Arthur.
You put a lot of work into that.
Thank you.
Mr. Montron, thank you.
That is great.
And I've had a recurring request for a break before we move on to the next topic.
Well, that's what we saw you get up, and we're like, somebody should have told them we requested a break.
I overstayed the five minutes, sorry about that.
That's funny.
I was working though. School fundraisers, does anybody have any feedback or updates? I looked at the list, it's, nothing jumping out at me as anything.
The highlighted blue ones are the new, since last meeting.
That all looked good, so seeing no feedback, we'll move on here. And now, the committee member reports, anybody have any reports? I know Ms. Hunt has a lot of exciting news for us.
Well, I don't know how exciting it is, but I attended the MASC, MASs conference this week. I was there Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Just a brief, though, probably the most important thing, I'll skip to the middle, is for Resolution Two, and I, I wasn't here at the last meeting, and you voted to not approve it unless an amendment was made, and I brought forth the amendment, shaking in my boots, but I did it, and it was passed with the amendment.
Wow.
Good job.
Yes. So, yes, I got up and...
So, there is hope, Mr. Morgan, there is hope, see, in the process, it did work.
I believe, and there was a lot of discussion about it before, beforehand, there was a lot of contention. No one brought forth that, you know, any, any amendments to that one, so when I got up and, and did it, they did discuss the amendment, and I believe it passed like 67 to 40, so it was close, but it did, it did, did work. And all the rest of the resolutions passed, yeah, so everything else went good.
Everything else passed, all the other...
Everything else passed, yep. I know we attended a couple of workshops together, Mrs. Trishelli, Trishelli and I. The theme of the whole week was social and emotional learning, I think Dr. Sorensen would probably have enjoyed a lot of what was, what went on. Just to give you a really quick overview of some of, I went to, it seems like I went to a lot of workshops this time, but we went to one on social and emotional learning, and how the schools need to make it a priority. We went to one that actually, Mr. Begley, you would have really liked to have been on, it was on, the DESE has a civic learning task force.
Ah, good.
And it, I even actually brought up a question, and I mentioned you in the, in the statement, because that you were always saying, you've got an elected body right here, why don't you utilize us? But there is a task force, and you can go on the DESE website and see what they're doing. They're trying to incorporate students voting. Afterwards, I went back and made a connection with the gentleman from the Kennedy Center, and we talked a lot about, they were talking about trips to Washington, and how a lot of schools can't afford that anymore. And the gentleman from the Kennedy Center, and I don't know if we do that now, but a field trip to the Kennedy Center can almost be like a mini-trip to Washington. So, where we in our own district have put that off, that might be something to consider if we're not already doing it. One of the, the guy that was there representing Kennedy Center is also a school committee member, so it was kind of interesting, he's from Melrose. And they talked about the kids voting. One thing that they did talk about, which was interesting, is they asked the group how many people had students on their school committee, and then they asked if they're voting members. So, that, and I know that we've been kind of not struggling, but we've rearranged our schedule a little bit to include our students more. So, I think that that's something that's on their radar as well, is what, what role the students actually have on the school committee as student representatives.
So, they're proposing they should be voting members?
I think, didn't they say that some of the school committees did have voting members? They had to be a certain age, yeah, and they, the selectmen in some towns have student members.
They vote?
Yeah, I think that they said, certain, well, they, it's like a mock quote, I don't think, they are part of the process, so they can experience it, and...
I get it, it's not really counted, it's...
So, that was interesting. I went to a workshop on MCAS 2.0, and they talked about what was coming up with MCAS 2.0, and if you go on the DESE website, they do have sample questions, or sample what the test is going to look like for ELA and math. And they're, they did talk about the pipeline, and down the road, they're going to start looking at social studies and science again to add that back into the testing. And, let's see, what else did I do? They have focus groups now for 2.0, which we knew, we've talked about that one, Dr. Campbell presented, I think, a couple of weeks, couple of meetings ago. The general session was on social and emotional learning as well. They said four out of a class of 20 has a diagnosable mental illness. Two more have problems that are serious enough to interfere with home or school. 30% of children in military families are at high risk. And the number one cause of high, high school dropout is untreated anxiety and depression, and that 80% of kids who need care will not receive it, and schools are ideally positioned to educate and enhance the social, emotional health of our students. So, that it needs to be a priority in schools to start incorporating more of, you know, the help and the guidance counselors, and this stuff that we've talked about before. Then, I went to one workshop, I actually was texting Dr. Maestis from the workshop, on the community eligibility program for the school nutrition. And I'm not sure if our district uses it in certain schools or not, but it sounds like we might. And it's basically a program that is funded through the DESE, it's called CEP. And if you have greater than 40% in a school of free and reduced lunch, you can get additional, I think you can end up getting eventually, 100% of the school paid for, for free and reduced lunch. There was a case study there from Pittsburgh, and they actually do even free dinners for students that are staying after school. And they also do community meals, like we do at Hedge in the summertime, but it's, I don't know if that's something to look into, it's called CEP. I went to a workshop on supporting transgender students, it was with Jeff Parati, who spoke at our school. I've actually gotten to know him quite well over the last couple of years, so I wanted to, I really enjoy his presentations. The leadership luncheon had Mo Cunningham, he was kind of funny, actually, he talked to, it was very political, about the, what do they call it, dark money, and the, the funding and politics. I did attend on our behalf the Division III meeting, it was uneventful, but I did go. There was, the superintendent from Plainville, Plainville did a presentation on community, what is it, common planning time?
Hattie Lally?
No, it's a gentleman.
Really, from Plainville?
Plainville, maybe it was one of their region, because they're a regional school district. And then, the last couple of things that I did, hold on one second, I wrote it, oh, I did, I went to the legislative update, and it was with Senator Sonia Chang Diaz, and Senator Jalen. And Senator Diaz is the chair of the Joint Committee on Education, and she's always a good supporter of, I know, with MASC. They talked about question two, there's a lot of progress being made right now, a lot of discussion, and I think I mentioned this before, around McKinney-Vento. They're starting to look at, is the cost and the time that these kids are spent when we're transporting them? Yeah, we're transporting them back to their home districts, and it's costing the districts money, but these kids are also on the bus for hours. So, they are starting to really look at if, if it is beneficial to just start educating them in the district that they're moving to. There was a lot of discussion around that, there were a lot of questions about funding. There was a lot of the funding for MSBA, I didn't realize that money, when we have the Massachusetts tax holidays, that money comes out of the MSBA fund, so when we aren't having that holiday... So when we aren't having that holiday, it will mean more money in that fund.
It's a, it's a reduction.
Yeah, so that, it was interesting that they, they brought up exactly where that money was coming from.
I think Baker's really quit the tax-free stuff.
Yeah. But it will help the schools in the long run.
It would. It's, it's one more day of penny, it's a penny from the income tax that goes to that fund. When we, when we have the tax-free days, that fund doesn't get.
Right.
The dollars.
And then the last one I went to was a social media, two colleagues of mine actually did that, that webinar, I mean, seminar, so I went to that one, and I actually brought back some things for you from that, because I thought it was really interesting. There were a lot of guidelines, even about us liking things on Facebook pages, if it has something to do with the school. Just things to be careful of and not to do. And it was interesting in the room to hear a lot of the, there were a lot of superintendents in that room that didn't do Twitter, didn't do Facebook, and I did mention that we, you know, we did a study on it a couple of years ago, and that we are actively doing it, and people were pretty impressed with that. And that's it. That was my three days.
So they, a sampling of the people in the room, the districts in the room.
Not many of them. We, we're kind of ahead of the game with that one, but they all understood why, and I, I actually explained that, you know, if the, if the information's going to be out there on social media, that, you know, we need to be the ones to put it out there first.
Interesting.
And there was even a, there was a suggestion, Copelman and Page was part of this workshop as well, and there was a suggestion that us as school committee members, if we blog, if we have a Facebook page, that we always put a clause in our description of who we are, that, that our ideas are our own. We should write that on there, especially if we do blogging. So it was just, I think that all those guidelines are in the handouts that I brought. But that was it.
Very good.
I have a couple of things to kind of parlay with what Dr. Mestias was talking about in his report with some initiatives that he and Joe, my husband Joe, were working on right now with Department of Veteran Services. It was a statewide initiative. The Secretary of Department of Veteran Services was out last year statewide. He was going into schools, into second, third grade classrooms, some kindergarten classrooms. I actually have a media advisory, which, once they come into Plymouth, this will be, this will be part of us with some press, but they put it out through DVS earlier this month. Secretary Francisco Urina visited the St. Paul School in Hingham, Massachusetts, where he read Veterans: Heroes in Our Neighborhood, which is this book that hopefully we'll be doing some readings on soon. I should give this to you, so you have it.
Yeah.
You might need it. Yeah, Heroes in Our Neighborhood to the first and second graders. He also took the time to speak with students about the role veterans play in their service to the United States of America and to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This event represents part of the secretary's ongoing campaign to increase awareness about our veterans, an initiative that has been met with great interest. Secretary Urina, with students at the St. Paul School in Hingham, the campaign to raise awareness about veterans in Massachusetts began last fall during National Veterans Awareness Week, which according to the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs was established to emphasize the need to develop educational programs regarding the contributions of veterans to this country. Urina wanted the students to have a connection to today's soldiers who are serving our country. In order to do so, Secretary Urina and his staff from DVS are working to reestablish relationships between veterans to the public and to make the public aware of the sacrifices that veterans made. Installing this sense of respect and appreciation for veterans in the first and second graders across the Commonwealth was one of the secretary's main goals in the formation of this initiative. Urina distributed Veterans: Heroes in Our Neighborhood to Massachusetts Veterans Officers, with hope that the veterans themselves would go into the schools and read to the children. Listening to personal stories from veterans, as well as taking to the, taking the time to draw attention to their service helps first and second graders grasp the important, important to our veterans. So that's kind of going into what Joe and Dr. Maestis discussed. I obviously had an interest in going to the meeting with school committee. I think it's incredibly important. I attended it a couple of weeks ago. We had the opportunity, we discussed that with Gary, to do the readings in kindergarten classrooms. My husband Joe is going to take over this initiative, so he actually read last week in Hingham, excuse me, in Marshfield, and it was great success, the kids were really interested in it. They talked a little bit to Joe about, you know, his involvement with the United States Air Force. He's been in for almost seventeen years now, it's a career for him. But for him, it's important. With three young kids, we have, we're a military family. I know military families in this community, and I, I really want to kind of embrace this. We also discussed possibly talking about an event around Flag Day with our fourth graders. Again, this is the ultimate goal, it's to heighten awareness about what a veteran is and really kind of heighten awareness on what patriotism is. I think it's an important time to do that. So I appreciate your, your dialogue with Joe and myself, and I look forward to seeing, you know, the kids, and hopefully we can get the readings done. So I'll pass the book down if you guys want to take a look. Some districts have actually had the author herself in to read. They've brought the book in, I know they've, I think, some, I'm not sure exactly what district's in the state, but they have brought a lot of books in, into their libraries, and they've purchased a lot of books, and the author is fantastic. She's done quite a few readings as well, so.
Excellent.
And again, I attended a couple workshops last week with Kim, and my schedule kind of got a little erratic, but it was interesting to meet some folks, and I was, I was really interested in the second workshop, the Civic Learning and Engagement Task Force, because I think that, for us, because that kind of ties into what we're doing here with, even our goal, with our strategic plan with Goal Two, to engage family, community, understand civic responsibility in our, you know, with our kids getting involved, so.
Very good, thank you. Mrs. Burgess?
And on the Veterans, yeah. I mentioned, you go, you don't have to parade any longer, but this year at Memorial Hall is the service, and this year that they're honoring Vietnam veterans, actually welcoming them, welcoming them home, which never was done for them, and it's really, really necessary and an important function. They'll all be given something in the ceremony, so it's, it's very good. John's also going to North High for both of those assemblies, and I think he's going to Hedge School too on the fifteenth, so, yeah. So we're, we're busy with the veterans things right now, so there's a lot of local things going on for veterans. I also went to, came here to PCIS for Travis Roy. Travis Roy was the one that was paralyzed in his first Bruins hockey game, and so that was a very good program. I was spending a lot of time watching, I think it was long for the age, some of them in the age group, but they were very attentive, and they, they really, they did really well to, to, to follow it all that time. And, and because of his injury, he's a little bit harder to follow than some others that would be speaking. And the other thing is that I didn't know that none of you got this, but anybody that was, is elected in town and, or appointed, was supposed to go to this Cape, this Copelman and Page law thing about the new public records law that's coming in on, on January first. But I did attend, and I was sitting with a guy from the Agriculture Committee, and neither one of us actually would have a role in this, because it would come into the school department. And they're talking about the, the records access officer, and you might need more than one, and then there would be a main one, and you have ten days now to give them the information, and anything that you give them, that's two hours or under, they don't have to pay for any longer. It's very interesting, but they're still making changes to it, so it was, it was an interesting take, but I'll give you the book.
Patty was, Patty was there.
Are you with them?
Yeah, yeah.
Behind you.
It's exciting stuff.
There I was, but you don't want a second one, huh?
I have like a stack, I go up for Dr. Maestis.
Oh, okay, all right. So I don't need it. Because I won't be in there giving out records. But anyhow, I did attend because I was supposed to attend.
They did a great job.
So.
Good?
Yep, I'm good.
Ms. Badger?
I just thought we should bring up the high school task force that Ms. Hunt, sorry, Mr. Bagley and I attended at Falmouth. It was very.
Oh, forgot about that.
I forgot about that, thank you very much.
It was, oh, yeah, and Mrs. Fry as well, attended, and it was, it was a really very informative event of the different processes in which each of the towns.
What was it about?
Attended, I'm getting there. Who were there, I promise, I'm getting there.
Title.
School, what was it, school, oh, somebody just changed.
Start times.
My, I don't know, my.
Go back to that.
Sorry, I just lost all my notes. School start time task force. So basically, it was mostly towns from the Cape, but there were some South Shore towns as well, breaking down on some of the schools that had completely already changed their start times and had basically taken their high school and flipped them with their elementary school. Then you had some towns who were in the process of trying to decide how to, who were, decide how to do it. Do they change the time that their, like Mashpee, Mashpee's in the process, and they're probably going to end up going to, what was it, their elementary's where at the same time as their middle school, or their like two elementary's where, and just to start at eight instead of, so it was basically how they were going to structure, and the kind of process that they'd gone through to decide what start times would be good, is what are the benefits to high schoolers versus what are the impacts to our elementary school students? So it was very interesting to see where everyone was, is in the process. So I thought it was, I don't know if you guys wanted to add anything to that, but.
I thought, I thought it was, it was very enjoyable. I, I thought there was a very nice roundtable discussion, it was going around a lot. It was, there was no slam dunk in the room, like nobody was saying, oh, yeah.
No right answer.
We need to move high school start times, we need to, you know, because as soon as somebody was talking about that, then somebody said, yeah, but what about the elementary schools? Now, we're going to fix one problem and create, and create another problem. And there were several members, there was one lady there, I think from Falmouth, I'm not sure, who was also a nurse. And she was saying, since the beginning of time, psychologists and everybody have been saying that the elementary school age needed their sleep and needed to start at the times that we have them as a society, we've routinely started them at. And now we're talking about shifting them earlier, so do we, do we make, give more sleep time to the high schoolers and then cause a problem with the elementary schools? And there was no one in the room that said they had the answer.
The size of your town impacted what, you know, it's easier in Mashpee to do something on that scale than it is in Falmouth or in Plymouth, when you have this geographic space and so many different schools. That was a huge piece of it.
The smaller the town, obviously, the easier it was to do it.
Yeah, and I, I had said that it was interesting that there were schools there in every different phase of it, and they did say that the people that had done it will tell you it's the best thing ever, and there's no problems. And it's funny, I actually had some conversations with some other school committees at the conference who were kind of in the same boat. Some of them that had already done it, and they thought it was wonderful, best thing they ever did, I don't know, did Dennis Naramith?
Yeah.
Change? No.
No.
But there were some other school committee members from across the state that I talked to, and some of them thought it was wonderful. And that was a kind of an underlying conversation that went on that week too, which was interesting. It's definitely a hot topic and something that people are really talking about.
Yeah, it seemed like the towns that said they did it or were close to doing it were the small ones. They weren't the, the large districts.
And they owned their buses.
Where they had ninety-plus square miles. They had like four buses and, you know.
Two schools, all in the same thing. They're all like right next to each other, so it's logistically easy. When we think of it, it's.
They have more of a walking community.
So I thought that was really informative.
I think bus is the big, that's, that's it, that's the hiccup.
Well, the busing, and then we impact one when we choose another, like how does that? Like that, the mother who talked about, you know, her kids go to bed at seven, what are they going to have to do, go to bed at six and then get the bus in the dark, like that's the, you know, so it's, you know, so it's something worth thinking about, and it was very interesting, interesting to be there. And then the next thing is, I know that I think all of us were at the tech advisory dinner, which I thought was really, really cool approach and a kind of topic on the, you know, the non-traditional student and having them up on stage and telling us about their experience. I mean, some of the kids, I just wanted to go up to them after and talk to them, and, you know, and then we, we had the one alumna, Sam, oh my god, Lee, oh my god, it starts with an L. I can't think of her last name.
On the graduate list?
Yeah, on fifteen, yeah. And she's fantastic, and did a nice job just telling what life was like after and the benefits of the program, even though she's going to school to be like a preschool teacher, I believe. And then I also, the Plymouth Childhood Center, I know that, I think, I think I saw everybody there, and it was so nice, yeah. I went through my calendar, because I was like, I know I did something, and I can't remember what. I thought that was really nice to see the rooms all cheery, and it seems like everybody was really happy to be there and be together and really be able to work together.
Was it a huge turnout?
Huge. The kids were having a great time doing that, what was it, like a, they had like a little game, that they were supposed to find things and take their parents around. Scavenger hunt, thank you for the word. There's my word. And I thought that was really nice. And then the college fairs, was mentioned earlier, was, I think, a great success. I know I had a lot of students. It was the, the people around me, and granted, I went to a women's college, but I thought it was funny that everybody was like, God, there's a lot of boys here, not as many girls. So I just thought that was an interesting little piece of information that we took away. And then as like a community reminder, the community ornaments are due on November fifteenth, if your organization is doing one. I just shellacked mine in my basement before I left.
I didn't survive the summer from last year.
Yeah, and the check, if it didn't survive as well. I don't know how the school ornaments made out, but they may or may not have made it. And then a little update on our alumni association, I wasn't able to go to the last meeting, but we've moved, instead of doing monthly meetings, we're going to do every two months to hopefully be able to kind of get more people there and to just have more time to do what we're working on. A big part is starting a, I'm going to miss it, the.
I didn't know about that.
The, like a Hall of Fame, but not a Hall of Fame, like an academic Hall of Fame is kind of the big push this year, so that's, I think, about it.
Very good. The advisory, I just had one thing, so I echo what Ms. Badger said, that the way that they handled the interviewing of the kids in the non-traditional roles, that was, that was really good. The takeaway was, at the end, when they said, okay, where do you want to be a year from now, what do you want to do? Not one of them said in the, in that non-traditional role.
Yeah.
What they wanted to do became traditional again.
Yeah.
So we're making progress, but we're not there yet. Because of the, of the three boys that were in the health program.
They'd be doctors.
They all wanted to be doctors, not nurses. And, and a dentist, right?
And a dentist.
And it went right on down the line, as they were saying, the ones, the girls that were welding, they wanted to do something else, and they were like, well, they should stop the story before we got to that part, but it, we're making big progress, I think.
On that tech advisory, though, I, I think we should mention that there are so many businesses and people that get together to.
Very nice.
To, to work with and go to those meetings ahead, and to work with those students and to provide them opportunities for apprenticeships and things like that, so, yeah, we need to thank them.
I think that's the longest line I've waited for, you know? I think it just grows every year.
Yeah. It was very well attended. Anybody else?
I actually have one, one quick thing that was in my notes that I forgot to mention. I did attend the, and I think we might have had a nurse from Plymouth there. The Massachusetts PTA had their first annual healthy, health summit, which was amazing. It was far better than, yeah, it was far away. And actually, it was during a storm, and they closed Route Two on the way. I got out of there just in time. But it was really good. There were a lot of, a lot of different workshops on, on different kinds of, you know, health things at schools come in. The majority of the attendees were school nurses and school health educators, which was really great. There were a lot of legislators there too. It was the day before the primary, no, it wasn't the day before, it was just election season, so we didn't get as many people as we wanted, but that was really well attended. And like I said, I'm pretty sure there was somebody from Plymouth there. I know Katie Kearney had a table there with her Sean's Law, and it was, you know, the, there were tons of vendors there, Kind was there, and I think that they're going to come to the school and do some kind of a program with the school, so it worked out really good.
Thank you.
Very good. It's exciting that we have so many different things running, you know, full breadth of all the different areas that we're involved in for education. That was, that was, that was great, all since our last meeting. Can be proud of that. PYDC, did we?
We need somebody.
Did we need?
We need somebody to go.
That's all right, because there you go.
Since our last meeting.
Well, he went.
Since our last meeting, and the next, there's no meeting in November.
Since our last meeting, and the next, there's no meeting in November, it's not until December 9th.
Okay. Then on the next, building committee, who wants to do?
I was there.
Building committee.
Oh, building. We can both, he can pitch in at the end, which is good. We're talking about Plymouth South High School. They seem to think that everything's overall on time. That fantastic main staircase has a few issues, but when they get it done, it says you'll be blown away. So, so with site work into the winter, they said that the humidity needs to be 55 degrees or lower in the building, and they're working on that. And Granite Cribs would be arriving, so that's what I have. I don't know what, you have any more for that?
Well, I thought it was interesting, we're 65% into the project. We've had about only seven change orders.
Yes.
And I think I'll just, just give you an idea of how the project's going by telling you the change orders. First one was across the parking lot where the students park, they're going to put irrigation to irrigate that part of the area. Fire pump is, rather than buy a new one, it's being refurbished, and that's a change order. A countertop and cabinetry and culinary is a change order. The fire protection system, the wiring for the fire protection system needs additional fire protection on the fire protection wiring.
Good.
There's additional socket work. The sprinklers, as we saw on our tour, are interesting. Sprinklers are not fixed, if you recall looking up there, they're actually on tubing that you can move around, and a couple of shops, that requires a little bit of extra socket work. They're redesigned, two rooms are being redesigned. There's adjustments right there. There are some design flaws in two rooms that are being redesigned. And more electricity is needed in something in a black box room. So one, two, three, four, five, only seven change orders, and we're 65% into the project. I mean, that's pretty exceptional for a project this size.
And yes, we did tour, tour the building on October 18th, so I forgot about that as well. On the Sims House, they've moved the water line to the other side of the house because it was too close to the neighbors. There's a trailer, the trailer is on site. The storage containers are, there's a storage container on site where they took the things that they want to keep from the house and put them in there so that they can work. The completion date will be on 5/17. And the Newtown Hall, there's, well, they always give us a list, but I'm not going to read the whole list. But everything's coming along good. They've, they've done, the wall and ceiling framing has been completed, sheetrock started, plaster repair has started, steel deliveries are complete, except for the connector, the cupola is, well, at this time, it was nearly completed. I don't know if it is. It is done, yeah. And future activities, so they're going to keep going on the board and plaster, and they're doing exterior repointing window installation, slate roof and gutter installation. And they're going to start the elevator in the 1820 portion. And so permanent power will be installed by the end of December. They're, they are enclosing the building for work for the, for the winter.
And as of the building committee meeting, that building was 41% complete, and as Dr. Maestas reported, it's two months, two months behind schedule.
Yeah, that's, yeah. And other projects, the South Russell Street parking deck, which is, was approved at town meeting, so they're, they're having the borings done, they were hoping October 29th. I don't, I didn't go and look at. So the town meeting passed the fire station, property to purchase the fire station. On the salt shed, they've put it out to bid. The boat ramp, there were, behind the lobster hut, the boat ramp. Well, it's, it's finally, it's finally come to fruition. I see it sitting there.
Boat ramp, but this is about the marine, the maritime facility.
No, I'm on, okay, I've got something, they've mentioned it on the boat ramp, because it's two separate projects. One's a state project, and one's, one's paid by the state, but it's a town project. And the maritime facility, they, so they were, they said there was a pre-bid that Wednesday on the state pier, there were four bidders. And on 11/8, which is tomorrow, it goes to design review. No update on the White Horse Beach restroom. And that's it. That's the whole report.
Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Frye, the appointments, leaves of absence, resignations?
Yes, we have three certificated appointments, 36 coach and advisor appointments, one classified appointment, one long-term maternity leave, and two short-term maternity leaves, and three resignations.
Okay, thank you. Now the homeschooling plan?
Yes, tonight, Mr. Bagley, we have seven homeschool education plans that have been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, and they have met the guidelines set forth by the committee, and I recommend approval.
Congratulations, administration.
Seconded by Ms. Badger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I tried.
Forget I said that.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Oh, I forgot to.
Please proceed with voting.
It's a learning curve.
Mine didn't come up yet, did yours?
Did it come up?
You and Margie are still there.
It's not getting to one.
We allow it, so.
You're on the end. Let's be joining the meeting again, try pressing meeting, maybe that button is just sad. There you go.
Thank you. Okay, sorry for that delay. Accounts payable warrant, Ms. Badger.
Yes. Okay. "Whereas school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost and transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve reports and accounts payable warrant S111016 dated November 10, 2016 in the amount of $992,427.43 as presented."
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second by Mrs. Burgess. Any further discussion? All those in, ah.
No.
It's been a few years I've been doing that, so I apologize.
One second. Michelle Badger and Margie Burgess, and we have a vote.
And now we're down to obsolete equipment. Dr. Maestas?
Yes, tonight, we have a 10-year-old printer that is beyond repair, and this is coming from the old Mount Pleasant School. I recommend disposal.
Do I have a motion? Ms. Badger?
Okay. I move that we approve the disposal of the old printer from Mount Pleasant.
And do I have a second, Ms. Hunt?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, then let's vote.
Gold star.
And the last item, another one for obsolete books and material?
Yes, this is discard of old books that are beyond use, and they are from Plymouth South High School, and I recommend disposal.
Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the disposal of the books from Plymouth South High School.
And a second?
They did.
And seconded, any further discussion? Then let's vote. Very good. That's it. So it's one of those rare occasions where we went way over on the-
We're still under by 10 minutes.
No, we went way over. It was supposed to be 8:48.
Yeah. Is that what it is?
It's okay, good conversation.
Win some, you lose some, but it was really good discussions tonight. Thank you, everybody, for participating. And it was really good. Don't forget to sign the warrant, and it was also, it was very nice to hear all the things that we were doing since the last meeting. And just thank you for everybody for participating out in the community like that. So without objection, we're adjourned.